Okay, good evening and welcome to your Pleasanton City Council meeting. Today is November 18th, 2025, and it is seven o'clock PM. Thank you and welcome, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Gatos, and if you can rise if you are able, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we go ahead and have roll call, please?
Councilmember Iker?
Present.
Gatos?
Present.
Nybert?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Mayor Balch?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We did not have a closed session that was canceled, so that item on our agenda is not, no items to report out from that. I'll mention to the public, I do a few things here. The first is the council is continuing to transition to electronic agendas and voting, although the voting is not working tonight, so we won't be doing that part. But on our screens, we have the agenda electronically, so that's typically what we're looking at when we're looking at the electronics up here. Just want to make sure our community knows that. Secondly, I just wanted to announce to our community that the parking lot at the Firehouse Arts Center that connects the Firehouse Arts Center to First Street is now open. So take a nice stroll through it, plus the connector path. Thank you very much to city staff all involved to get that. That was through the savings on the original project. We used it as an alternative, so something to be thankful for as we continue to see improvements in our community every day. All right, with that, any agenda amendments by staff?
Thank you, Mayor, no changes.
Okay, thank you. Any agenda amendments by my fellow council members at this time?
Um, I'd like to pull item number four off consent.
Okay, item number four is being pulled off of consent and will now become item number 13.
I'd also like to pull one of the planning items, the very last one on the list, which is in our supplemental, which is the vesting of the tentative tract at Black Avenue.
Okay, so that will come back at a future item. So you're basically saying that you'd like council to hear that matter?
Yes.
Staff, that's appropriate for that? Just give us a second here. He's calling up the zoning administrator of the planning commission action.
If it's going to come back to council, we can hear it then, but if, if not, I want to address it before then.
All right. Yeah. So it'll be called up for review. It'll be removed from this action tonight, and it'll come back at a subsequent meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, that is P 230563, and if you're looking, that is on our agenda, item number three on this agenda here. So the revised consent calendar is items one through seven excluding number four and excluding P 230563 on item number three. Okay, seeing no additional agenda amendments, we're going to be going to consent calendar. The consent calendar is for items or for items that are considered routine in nature and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is required, that particular item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At this time, do we have any questions on consent by my fellow council members?
No. No.
Seeing no questions, I have no speaker cards for consent. Mr. Houston, I'm going to be moving you to the item 13 now, so that'll be at the end of the, tonight. If anyone would like to speak on consent from the public, again, items one through seven minus four, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, public comment is hereby closed, and we're bringing it back to council for an action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You, okay, so we have a-
Minus four.
Minus four and, and three as amended to remove P 230563.
That's correct.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any comment before we take a roll call vote? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Iker?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Gatos?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Mayor Balch?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Excellent, so that covers us quickly. Now, we're going to move to item number eight, meeting open to the public. This is a presentation of accommodation to the Pleasanton Military Families for their years of service to the Pleasanton community. Before I get it handed off to Councilmember Gatos, I'm just going to say a personal thank you to your openness, willingness, and support of the entire Pleasanton community. You've accepted people from everywhere. You've made them feel included, and you've supported our men and women serving. It touches my heart personally, and thank you. We'll have Councilmember Gatos read the proclamation, and then we'll ask you to speak, and we'll come down and take a picture.
Thank you. The City of Pleasanton commends Pleasanton Military Families upon the conclusion of its service to the community. Pleasanton Military Families was founded in 2003 by Chris and Valerie Miller as a grassroots network dedicated to supporting Pleasanton residents with family members serving in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas the organization grew from a small group of neighbors gathering to support one another during deployments into a highly respected, community-based nonprofit that provided support, care packages, welcome home celebration, and connection for Pleasanton's military families. And whereas Pleasanton Military Families served as a compassionate and steady source of comfort during challenging times, offering a space where families could share experiences, honor service, and build lifelong friendships grounded in understanding resilience and pride. And whereas, under the leadership of its founders and volunteers, the organization coordinated community-wide recognition efforts, including the annual Yellow Ribbon Display, patriotic gatherings, educational outreach, and partnerships with veterans and active-duty support organizations throughout the region. And whereas, following the passing of co-founder Chris Miller in 2023, the organization continued its service with dedication and grace, honoring his legacy and continuing, continuing to ensure Pleasanton families with loved ones in the military felt acknowledged and supported. And whereas, after more than two decades of meaningful impact in the lives of hundreds of local families, Pleasanton Military Families is concluding its organizational operations with deep pride in its mission and gratitude for the community that surrounded it. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pleasanton City Council hereby recognizes and commends Pleasanton Military Families for its decades of compassionate service, heartfelt outreach, and the steadfast commitment to honoring military service members and their families. Dated this 18th day of November, 2025, signed by Mayor Jack Balch and the four members of the city council.
Would offer them a chance to speak?
Sure.
Yeah, if anyone wants to say a few words on behalf of Pleasanton Military Families, this would be the time to do it, and then we'll ask that you, we'll honor you by name and ask you to take a picture with us down in the front, so. This is Ms. Pat Frizzell.
It was unplanned, but thank you. We greatly appreciate being honored by the City of Pleasanton and for, want to thank you for all your support over these past 23 years. With the Yellow Streamer Program on Main Street, the Streets Department has taken them up and, yeah, put them up and taken them down as ranks have changed and years have gone by. We want to thank the mayors of Pleasanton and city council members who always came to the packouts and helped pack boxes for our troops, the fire department that was there at almost every homecoming and always welcomed our troops back home, the police department for when we had motorcycle escorts down Main Street and through town that kept the traffic at bay while the motorcycles came through, and just the citizens of Pleasanton that offered a lot of support for us. We really enjoyed being in the parades and, you know, receiving a lot of hooting and hollering. Even at the Christmas parade, people always appreciated what we did for the troops. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Frizzell. And we'd like to invite you up, and I'm going to read all the names so everyone gets individually recognized here. So Ms. Pat Frizzell, thank you so much. Sydney Benson-Roth, Sharon and Tony Morris, Dennis Colvin, Joanne Weiser, and last but not least, Azadeh Ariana, who many of you may know or not know is the mother of my closest friend on the planet, recently retired Command Sergeant Major Afshin Ariana, who just retired a short month ago after 20-plus years serving his country. So wanted to take a point of personal privilege to recognize him and her, because she was a second mother to me growing up. So please join us down in front.
And also, one more person is Bob Sanchez. His son is completing his 20 years of service and coming home in three days.
All right.
From the Army. 23 years.
Well, thank him for his service, and congratulations to you, sir. There we go. Thank you.
I think Matt and I are crying too. Okay, I think we're all, we're all drawing our eyes a second here. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we're going to move to item number nine. And again, thank you very much, Pleasanton Military Families. Item nine is public comment regarding matters not listed on the agenda. I'd like to read a little bit here. Good evening and welcome. This is your opportunity for members of the public to address the Pleasanton City Council on any matters that are within the council's subject matter jurisdiction but are not listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please reserve your comments until we get to that item and it's called. If you wish to speak now or for a future item, please fill out a blue speaker card and turn them into the city clerk, the cards are outside on the credenza, and turn them into the city clerk. I ask that all community members be respectful and help maintain decorum. Speakers may have different opinions, and we want to hear all perspectives and viewpoints. To that end, please no clapping, booing, or other disturbances. If you would like to show support for what the speaker is saying, please simply raise your hand, and we will understand that as additional support. Please know that this is your time to be heard. If you do ask questions, those won't necessarily be answered unless taken up by a council member after the conclusion of your allotted time or at the end of public comment period. Speakers are hereby limited to three minutes, and I appreciate everyone's cooperation. Would anyone like to speak on item nine, any matter not on the council agenda? I have no speaker cards for item number nine. Okay, seeing none, item nine is hereby closed. Thank you very much. Public hearings and other matters, we have a couple of items, as everyone knows. So with that, we're going to move to item number 10. Staff, receive an update on the outcome of stakeholder engagement and feasibility and cost analysis and direct staff to meet and confer with Pleasanton Garbage Service to negotiate a three- to five-year extension of the current franchise agreement for solid waste management facility services, excuse me, solid waste management services in Pleasanton, and bring back a recommendation to council no later than July 2026. Well, it's a very descriptive agenda item. Welcome. Your mic? Yeah.
All right, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Elora Page. I'm the Waste and Recycling Manager, and I'd also like to introduce our consultant, Rob Hilton, from HF&amp;H. Tonight, we're here to present on the solid waste and recycling system. Over the last several months, we've conducted cost and feasibility analysis as well as held various community engagement activities and met with our council subcommittee to frame the path forward for our solid waste franchise. And Rob will walk you through our findings, the timeline, and our recommendation. We are asking for your direction tonight to allow six months to negotiate a three- to five-year extension of the current franchise agreement with Pleasanton Garbage Services. And a final recommendation, we'll come back to you in six months.
Is that you? Okay. Presentation, man. All right, well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's going to be with you tonight to discuss the product of our last six months of working with the Waste and Recycling Committee and with PGS. So I'm going to walk you through quickly the current state of solid waste services, some issues that are facing the solid waste system right now and needs that the city has, and the result of some of the analysis and stakeholder engagement that we've done along with our recommendation. So quickly, as most of you are familiar with, PGS has been serving the City of Pleasanton since 1969, and there is a general high level of satisfaction with the service that they've been providing through all of the folks that we've talked to. They provide primarily the collection services, collecting bins and carts in front of residents and businesses each week, transferring that material through their transfer station and utilizing downstream material handling facilities owned by other companies and listed here on this slide. So the reason that these discussions started is sort of manifold. The collection services agreement was nearing the end of the term at the end of June of 2029. The transfer station, as you are aware, has become an issue with some of the development going on in East Pleasanton and some encroaching land uses on that site as well as some compliance issues with the site. And so we brought those items to the council subcommittee in May and got direction to work over the next six months to engage community stakeholders, to engage PGS, and to engage potential other service providers to understand what the city's options were. Quick slide for context on the total revenues involved in this contract is just short of about $35 million a year. And so that means, you know, as we look forward to another contract term, you can imagine that those are going to go up with increased program costs and increased inflation that goes on. It's also worth noting that of that total, about 5% is the cost of the transfer station. on the order of $70 to $100 million, including those land acquisition costs. So, we have a wide range of potential outcomes for how this would work. And reasonably, those costs are going to be borne by Pleasanton ratepayers, and so we're very thoughtful of going into whatever that facility development is in a smart way. One of the options that was looked at was, well, what if we didn't have a transfer station? What if we just direct haul material to the landfills and other processing facilities? And we looked at what that cost impact would be. Compared to utilizing the current transfer station, you would have an increased cost. So, the current transfer station is more efficient than if we were driving everything to the landfills today. But when you add in the costs of upgrading the transfer station, actually, it would be cheaper slightly to direct haul the material. It would result in the savings of about $800 to 3.2 million per year. But you would lose the use of your in-town transfer station. We looked at what other communities around you do in terms of both their hauling arrangements and what facilities they use, and we do note that of the five tri-valley cities, Pleasanton is the only one that has a transfer station in town. All of the other tri-valley cities' residents and businesses are made to direct haul their material to landfill. We looked at some alternatives for community drop-off services. Alternative programs that your neighboring communities use include expanding curbside collections, adding more containers that people can have at no additional cost, having on-call collections, hosting drop-off events in the community somewhere. So, there are alternatives to having a transfer station that would alleviate some of those needs. None of them on a permanent, you know, day-to-day, open basis. They would be periodic programs. So, the last piece that we did was reach out to stakeholders in the community, and that was done in a faceted way. Started with a statistically valid residential survey that was done by a polling firm, contacted a little over 400 residents in the city to get their input. We also did direct meetings with 21 multifamily property owners and building managers to understand the particular needs around the multifamily environment, and then had a number of public meetings to hear directly from businesses, as well as residential ratepayers. In general, what we heard is that folks are very concerned about cost. They prioritize cost effectiveness and the cost impacts over convenience, service quality, and environmental impacts. We, in meeting with the multifamily and commercial stakeholders, heard a general high level of satisfaction with PGS from both groups. Both indicated a need for some support in complying with state laws and local laws, and really needed more tools and education to do that. So, there's some notes about what we might include in a future service agreement. And again, in both cases, the multifamily property owners and the businesses were very focused on cost. We've included in the staff report the results of the surveys, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on these. I can certainly answer any questions that you may have, but as you can see, generally a very high level of satisfaction with the services provided by PGS. This 94% rank rating is pretty common among solid waste service providers to be in the 90%. 51% of the folks that they spoke to had not used the transfer station in the last 12 months, but 84% supported having a publicly available transfer station in the community. As I mentioned, there was a lot of focus on, you know, they value sustainability, but they prioritize cost effectiveness over that. And in general, folks felt that their trash and recycling bill is about right. 53% felt that the service was well-priced. And then lastly, we asked about folks' attitudes about an RFP process. And what was really interesting is, you know, 55, 56% of folks said, "We really like PGS, but we think as a matter of good governance, an RFP process should be done." Another 3% of folks said, "Don't love PGS, and we should do an RFP process." So, in total, about 58% supported a competitive process. So, staff's recommendation after receiving input from the Waste and Recycling Subcommittee is to direct staff to negotiate with PGS for the next six months or so over a three-to-five year extension that would allow us to work through a framework and a timeline for the issues related to the transfer station to see what it would take to keep a transfer station open, whether that's the current one being retrofitted or a future greenfield site. Sort of work through those issues, work through some additional high priority service needs, not a major overhaul to the services, but some targeted services, and really work through what the process would look like for ensuring that the transfer station stays available to the public in the event that PGS were to sell, or if they were to sell that site. So, that is our recommendation, and we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. So, we have two members of the Waste and Recycling Committee. I might bookend you guys. So, Councilmember Gatos, any clarifying questions to staff?
I don't. You know, for the record, I've spoken to council for Pleasanton Garbage Service. I've been on the subcommittee meeting. I feel like I'm fully informed to move forward at this point, so nothing further.
Okay. Vice Mayor, clarifying questions? I do have speaker cards. I should have told you.
In regard to the loss of use of in-town transfer station, I believe you said that 51% want to keep it? Is that right?
84% want to keep it. 51% had not used it in the last year.
Oh, I see. Okay, so a significant number that haven't used in the last year still want to keep it. Nice to have convenience, I guess. Let me see here. So, other cities in the tri-valley, you mentioned the other four, I believe it was four, utilize other off-site facilities, and they offer periodic days or opportunities for their residents to, you know, conduct the kind of disposal that ordinarily would require a transfer station. So, what, you know, what is Pleasanton gaining? This may seem obvious to you, but I'd like to hear a little bit more. What is Pleasanton gaining by having a transfer station?
There is certainly a feeling among the public, and was held by the committee members as well, that having that convenience for the public to be able to conveniently dispose of things will potentially mitigate illegal dumping that may occur if people have to go further away, and provides a more cost-effective and convenient public service to folks. So, I think, you know, consistent with that 84% of folks who say, "I don't necessarily use it every year, but when I want to use it, I want it to be there," we're trying to figure out how to accommodate that. I will say, it's a challenging issue. The permitting issues and the mitigations that are needed for the site, you know, it's going to be a challenging thing.
Yes, I can imagine that's true. And do you know if there are any feasible greenfield locations? Maybe a loaded question, not sure.
PGS has identified one potential location that I think we all believe would be viable, but there are some access issues right now, and there's a land acquisition cost, significant land acquisition cost issue.
Okay, all right. No other questions?
Okay. Councilmember Tessa?
We all received a response from PGS with a lot of items. I won't go over it, but is, I'm assuming staff has reviewed that. Is there anything that they want, we should address on there? They felt that many of the items in the staff report have been corrected, and is...
Yeah, I think our staff...
Your mic.
Our staff report is sort of comprehensive over the work that we've been doing over some time, and PGS is correct. Some of the items have been corrected, or they are positioning themselves to correct some of the items, but we thought it was important to still explain, you know, the work that has gone into getting them positioned around the compliance issues.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. So, the cost to actually move rather than retrofit is, I think, prohibitive. We don't want those kinds of costs being absorbed by our ratepayers. So, the only reason to do that would be because residential is creating incompatible uses in that area. Is that true? Otherwise, that site, it's a little small, and there, I did have the opportunity to speak with the owner of the, of PGS, and so she was able to answer a lot of my questions. But, and so I understand there's still an outstanding of needing a bit more space than that allows, but otherwise, I'd love to hear your response, city manager.
Yeah, there's certainly compatibility issues that have been created with the land use changes that are happening in the neighborhood. But I would say that when we're looking at investing in, whether it's the ratepayers, PGS through the ratepayers, or ultimately a public facility, there are opportunities and potential wins to be had by relocating the facility for anyone who's trying to create a transfer station going forward. We have not just land use compatibility issues, but also some vehicle queuing issues that happen at the current facility. So, there is a significant amount of investment that needs to be made to improve the design and functionality of that facility, both to meet operational needs, but also regulatory changes.
Okay, but you're saying...
Compatibility is a part of it, but it's, there's more to it. There is, there's a, there's an amount of investment that needs to be made, and trying to put a large facility on a site that is already space constrained is going to be a challenge. So, acquiring more land or repositioning it elsewhere are both, should, are both things that I think PGS would like to consider and we would like to consider for compatibility issues and also for functionality.
And yet, I'll ask the consultant then, because in the industry, my understanding is that to make a facility like that work is doable. It isn't...
It may be doable. PGS has engaged some really good engineers in the industry to take a look at what those mitigations would be, and I understand that they've started that process. They don't have, you know, recommendations at this point. It is extraordinarily rare to have a solid waste facility adjacent to a multifamily residential development. You know, they don't, they don't make the best neighbors for sharing sugar across the fence. And so, I think there is a significant challenge to this. The firm that they've engaged has wrestled with those challenges in other places and been successful in some of them. And so, I think we want to see, as part of what this process over the next few months would do is to understand what is the likelihood of that. And then if, if at some point that doesn't work, what do the off-ramps look like and the alternatives look like at that point? And to your point, it is very expensive to look at a greenfield site.
Yeah. Well, and so you brought it back to incompatibility. So, that really is what we're talking about. We have, we continue to move in a direction that creates incompatibility to, and it could result in, and, and, just a, an expense to our ratepayers, to our residents, that I don't know could be offset by those residential uses. So, okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Iker?
Questions? Actually, I do have a handful of questions here. How do our rates compare to our surrounding cities? What does that, what does that look like?
You are generally the lowest rate in, for every rate category in the tri-valley. There's one or two commercial rates where Livermore is a little bit cheaper, but by and large, you have the cheapest rates.
Do you know what the rate structures of each of those cities are?
I haven't committed them to memory, but yes, we did include that in the survey that we did.
Okay. Can, can we get those so we can see what that looks like? So, it stands to reason that a direct haul would require a greater number of trips because you have lost time. Would that be correct? Because it's from either Altamont or from San Leandro, which is the next closest facility. We're talking at least 20 minutes to either, either location. So, that, to me, in my sense, and please tell me if you agree with this or not, is that it'd be a cost associated with driver pay, fuel, and, and lost time in getting those trips out there, which means we're going to have an increased cost by not having a transfer station closer to home or something in our backyard, because that, that does save money because of the proximity of it for the, for the haul, right?
So, under the current situation, with the current depreciation costs and operating costs of the facility, it's about $1.2 million cheaper to use the transfer station, consolidate loads, and, you know, transfer them up to the landfill and compost facility. If we assume a $10 to $23 million additional depreciation expense on the facility that flips it and to where it's slightly more expensive to have the new, to have the retrofitted facility and do the transfer than it would be to direct haul, at least for the period that you're depreciating that investment over.
So, does the study take into account the costs that would be associated for a third party to come in to put in infrastructure to make their contracts work? You're associating costs associated with PGS to make their contract work, but it doesn't seem like you're associating the same costs that another contractor would have to bring in or have to apply to their contract.
We don't know what those costs would be and the extent to, you know, which those facilities would need to be developed. We understand, for example, from waste management, that the Altamont facility could be used as a vehicle parking and fueling facility without much upgrade at all. They may have to put a couple of trailers there for the drivers to report to and have a break room. So, the extent of the upgrades, you know, differs by provider, and PGS has acknowledged that they need to do some things for their vehicle parking and may even have to have a separate site from the transfer station to make enough room. So, I think that condition affects everybody a little bit differently.
Okay. My impression with waste management was going to be a little bit more than that, but thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. I have just a...
If we assume a $10 to $23 million additional depreciation expense on the facility, that flips it and to where it's slightly more expensive to have the new, to have the retrofitted facility and do the transfer than it would be to direct haul, at least for the period that you're depreciating that investment over.
So does the study take into account the costs that would be associated for a third party to come in to put in infrastructure to make their contracts work? You're associating costs associated with PGS to make their contract work, but it doesn't seem like you're associating the same costs that another contractor would have to bring in or have to apply to their contract.
We don't know what those costs would be and the extent to, you know, which those facilities would need to be developed. We understand, for example, from Waste Management, that the Altamont facility could be used as a vehicle parking and fueling facility without much upgrade at all. They may have to put a couple of trailers there for the drivers to report to and have a, a break room. So the extent of the upgrades, you know, differs by provider, and PGS has acknowledged that they need to do some things for their vehicle parking and may even have to have a separate site from the transfer station to make enough room. So I think that condition affects everybody a little bit differently.
Okay. My impression with Waste Management was going to be a little bit more than that, but thank That's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. I have just a few follow-up, and thank you for the questions asked before. So for the direct haul option that we're looking at or potential that our other municipalities around us do, does that, you know, because I know we, we take it to our transfer station, we consolidate, we, we sort a bit, and then we kind of go from there. So we're already traveling another leg that we, the Pleasanton community, may not realize. But if we direct haul, two parts. One, confirming, we would be more reliant on source, sorting of the resident or the consumer to properly source sort, right? Because we're not sorting it at the transfer station, I'm asking. And then the second is, are we talking about more vehicle miles traveled overall as a result of it? Because more traffic on 580, because it's not consolidated versus consolidated? That's what I'm trying to figure out, our carbon footprint maybe.
Yeah. So on the more sorting, no. It doesn't change the sortation requirement. PGS is not sort, you know, running the material across the line and sorting it anymore here. So that wouldn't change. In terms of the VMTs, yes, there would be some marginal change in VMTs within, yeah, this, this valley. It'd be pretty specific.
Okay. And then one of my other questions, which is actually related to the staff report, the alternative that you have. So I brought this up to the City Manager earlier. So it sounds like even if you're going to retrofit the current facility two to four years, or you're going to build a new one six to 10 years, but the alternative is we would give a new operator, if we went out for an RFP, two years to get up and running. But two years doesn't seem to match the timeline for a transfer facility at all. So we, by, by definition, the alternative would be a direct haul.
That, that would likely be the outcome, though PGS would likely be a respondent and would be able to propose what they have.
Well, let me ask this. I'm trying to think about the city-owned transfer station option as what alternative is out there with an RFP that still would have a city-owned transfer station option, right? And does the alternative presented in the staff report actually represent a reasonable alternative to have that as our option, right? Possibly not at this time.
I think if you were interested in having a city-owned transfer station as its own goal and objective, then doing a design-build-operate RFP for a transfer station, separate from the collection services, might be a wise thing to do, and then you could work with whoever that party is to identify the site, acquire the site, design and develop the site, and then they could operate it for a period of time, and then you'd be able to bid that out, and somebody else could operate it for a period of time. So if that were the approach that you were doing with a Greenfield site, that would be a reasonable way of doing it. Part of the issue here that we're, we're straining against is, it's a little bit of the tail wagging the dog. We've got 95% of the costs that the ratepayers pay that are associated with collection, this 5% associated with the facility, but people want the convenience of the in-town, publicly available facility. PGS is the only one that owns one. So that's sort of where we end up with the recommendation that we have.
Okay, so assuming, just as a thought line, assuming I want that option you just outlined as a potential RFP option, right? Does staff's recommendation in this report still stands to extend the PGS contract and continue negotiating this?
It does, because we would need the time to be able to work through that scenario. Like you mentioned, the, the timeframes for permitting a new facility are significant, and so there'd have to be a near-term, medium-term, and ultimately a new facility longer term.
So staff's recommendation actually still allows us to pursue almost all of these options, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Creates a lot of flexibility for the council, for PGS, to, to be able to, to work through some of the, the topics that we've included in the agenda report, and also lets us have more time to talk about our transfer station options.
Okay. I think for questions, that's all I've got. Does anyone have any follow-up questions on the second round before we go to public comment? Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Did you show the alternative recommendation slide, which I think follows this one?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I knew you were asking about it, yeah. So the number of advantages mentioned about this approach, the alternative approach, would not some of those also be present in the staff recommendation approach as well?
They, they are. The only thing that we're not doing is, is going out to a, a public bidding process for the service at this stage.
But we're not precluding it.
But we're not precluding it, just not now.
Correct, okay, right. All right, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, yep.
Just going, following up on what the mayor was just asking, you know, from the subcommittee meetings we have, it was pretty clear to me at least that, and I want you to confirm this, that it's not really feasible. None of the, when we took a presentation from all of the other people who were kind of getting in line for this RFP, none of them were proposing a transfer station within the city of Pleasanton, correct?
None of them had one. Green Waste Recovery did reference that they would be willing to partner with the city in developing one, but the others, you know, Republican Waste Management talked about using their facilities in the valley.
Right, but I mean, this, the, the collections and the transfer station are in, are intertwined to the point where one's not going to be financially feasible without the other. Do you agree with that? I mean, it's going to have to be one company doing both of those things.
Not necessarily. There are other publicly-owned transfer stations and even landfills in the state that are operated by a separate entity that does the collection for that community.
But if we wanted to, I mean, the expense, the, the reality of this city having the expense to build a brand-new transfer facility, transfer station and allow someone else to run it is not really an option we realistically discussed and think is possible. We, we didn't really, do we have that conversation? And I'm just forgetting about it, because it didn't seem to be something that anyone thought was reasonably possible.
No, what we talked about was whether PGS could use the existing site they have or whether they would have to find another site in that area and develop there. If PGS is going to develop it there with ratepayer money, it may as well be any solid waste service provider that's competent to do that.
Fair enough. But that's, I just wanted to confirm that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional follow-up questions before we go to public comment? All right, we'll go to public comment. I have two speaker cards so far. If you'd like to speak on item 10, you'll submit a speaker card. PGS, I don't have one for you. If you'd like to speak, you're not the applicant, it's not that type of show, so you'll have three minutes. Our first speaker is Andrea Bloom, followed by Bob Sanchez, and likely Marty Interbitzen. Three minutes, welcome.
Great, thank you. I'm Andrea Bloom. I am Chair of the Energy and Environment Commission. It's incumbent upon me as Chair of the Commission to bring new solutions to Pleasanton, and after listening to this presentation, we are hauling way too much garbage, and I'm going to show you why. Because everything I have here is completely recyclable, and you could recycle this, and I don't think my family is any different than yours, but this is all going to the landfill. So again, we're hauling too much, and there's no need for this to go into the waste stream. I'm sure you've all heard about the danger of microplastics. They exist in every one of our bodies, and we can do something about it. So any contract that we have, we must allow for other service providers to do their part and save our planet and keep Pleasanton beautiful. So you're talking about keeping costs down, you should see how little garbage I have, because I am actually recycling all this. And by Ridwell, this is the company Ridwell, that came to do a presentation, and Julie Testo was there, and people in our commission, and we were so excited, and we know what the problem is, is that the current contractor will not allow other service providers to pick up other people's garbage that we're paying for. So we really have to think about other solutions, and it's extremely cost-effective for only $20 a month. All of this extra waste that's right now piling up and being hauled to the transfer station and then to the landfill does not need to be going into the waste stream. It's made into amazing products, and that's one reason why the cost is so low, because this garbage becomes the cost of goods for real products that people pay for. So I think it's an amazing solution, and I'd like to see this incorporated. I know Pleasantonians really want to keep our environment clean and safe, and again, that's, that's what I do on the committee, and we need to have more resident participation. So the, the way I can do it now, which is ridiculous, and you can't expect people to do this, is to put it in these plastic bags and mail it. I have so much garbage, I'd be mailing this every five days, waiting for my replenishment, and this is not inexpensive. Each one of these is $12, so I'd much rather pay $20 for a pickup every two months. So there's another place where you can bring waste like this. I don't know if anyone's been doing this, but you can, people don't know about it. You can bring this to Safeway, and there's a garbage there, and you fill it up. Well, that thing's always overflowing. The sign's never up. It's like on the corner, and people don't know that it even exists, and how can you expect a city of 70,000 people to bring their garbage to one Safeway? So anyways, I hope you consider this as a solution for all this waste we're hauling in our beautiful city. Thank you.
I'd like to ask some questions of the speaker.
Sure.
So Ms. Bloom, I love your energy, and I'm so glad you're on our commission. I was at that presentation, and it was a remarkable, way lot, way more people there than we have here tonight. But what I, what did you, you mentioned that the products are converted into, or the waste is converted into products. Did that have the assurance that those, that the recycling wasn't simply going to get thrown away, that they were guaranteeing that it was going to become those products? Was that...
That's a great question, Julie. So I, and I, I sent information through the Pleasanton website, and I included the Ridwell website, and I looked at it yesterday as I was preparing this, and they have a really, really high percent of ability to use this. It's like in the high 90s, which is remarkable. People who do this service and pay for it really care about the environment, so they, they give the bags and clean, you know? They tell you how to take care of it and how to dispose of this. So it's, I mean, like 94% of it is made into products that people then purchase. It's, it's really remarkable. I mean, we, we have the capability to do this, we just have to make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Bob Sanchez, followed by Marty Interbitzen. Welcome. Three minutes.
Yeah, there's a few aspects that I didn't hear addressed in their report, and one of them is the cost that is not borne by the city or through the, directly, but it's like, me as a homeowner, I have landscaping service, my landscaping service goes to the transfer center, and they, that's where they take the landscape. They would now have to haul it, so that means the contract with my landscaper for residence would go up. Okay, so there's, it's going to, the other thing is, large and small contractors for renovations. Renovations are done, I've had on my own home, I've built a building here, and I've used a transfer station on a fairly regular basis. When a small contractor, you've got a bathroom remodel, that waste would have to be hauled to a faraway, that bill would be an increased cost for the small renovations that are done that would be borne by our homeowners. So for the community, it wouldn't be seen by the city, but it is a cost to our community that is not seen. The other thing that's coming up now is regulations, and one of them is going forward is restaurant food waste that are, scheme, that can be something that I think will be up in the future, that that will be something that will have to be addressed. The people talking about it don't want it going to the waste stream, they want it to be used. So that could be something that could be incorporated into a new type of transfer station. Sorting too, I think will become more automated, so being in the facility, that type of consideration. Well, yeah, and I think of that, the right, the local trucks that pick up my can, they will go to the transfer station, well, they'll go to Greenville or someplace, way further, so those are much more smaller, so I think there's a lot of cost there because of the time. So I think there's a lot of costs that are not necessarily being shown in the current models that you're doing, and also the convenience. Like, I also use the hazardous waste in Livermore. So a lot of people though, you know, in a new system, we could have that maybe here too, so because, so people use it. Because one of the things people don't do is they, you know, there's the people like the person that just, they will go the extra mile to take care of these things, but a lot of people, they'll just throw it in the trash. So I think there is a, another very hard thing to determine for a study, the cost, but I think this transfer station is a great benefit. I've worked with the city of Milpitas on construction, Livermore actually, construction sites, and it, each of these are different, but this is, I think, in building, that's been one of the greatest assets for a community as well as a small contractor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Marty Interbitzen, this is my last speaker card. If you'd like to speak on item number 10, please turn in a blue speaker card. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Balch, members of the council, Martin Interbitzen, representing Pleasanton Garbage Service. This is going to be really short, because we don't have a presentation, but I just wanted to say that we've spent several months now communicating with your staff and working with the subcommittee. We're in support of the staff's recommendation over the next six months to see where that goes. You've all raised very good comments and questions, all of which we expect to really vet in much more detail with the staff and the committee. We're confident that we'll be able to work collaboratively with the city, staff, and, and the committee to bring back a presentation that we think will be supported by you and the committee, at least we would hope that. The only tweak, I just want to make sure, I, it appears that the, the negotiations over the next six months would be with the staff. We would really like to have some members of the subcommittee participate on some sort of a regular basis as we go through that. I think would be helpful and save a lot of time, because we get direct input then from council members. You know, the, the, it's a complex industry, and the transfer station, I think, is, has always been very welcomed by the community. Most of the $10 to $23 million we're talking about is really to mitigate the potential or real impact that's going to occur with encroaching development. But we are where we are, so we're not into blame spreading here. I think there's, we all need to take the responsibility to find the solutions that are going to be the best interest of the community and the city itself and for Pleasanton Garbage Service, and we look forward to the opportunity to work through those issues over the next few months. Gina Cardera is here. She's the president of the company. If you have operational questions, I'm going to defer to Gina, because she's got 42 years experience here, and I don't, I've, I've done work for Pleasanton Garbage Service over the years, including, including in the late 70s, but never on the operational side. So I'll answer any questions you have if I can. If not, I'm going to give Gina the high sign and have her come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Marty at this time, by any council member? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we do have one additional speaker card, Ms. Vicki Labarche. If anyone else would like to speak on item 10 related to the transfer station, please fill out a blue speaker card at this time. Welcome. Three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. It's, it's kind of interesting, because we were out to dinner with another couple recently who's doing some remodeling in their, in their house, and they were talking about taking products to the transfer station, and we got on this discussion of having a transportation, transfer station in Pleasanton versus having to take things out to Livermore and the, and the dump out there. And one of the things that came up is that if we get rid of the transfer station, there could be unintended consequences. Some of those unintended consequences are things that you see on the way out to Brentwood. You see sofas, mattresses, furniture, garbage dumped along the side of the road. And people do this because they don't want to take it to the landfill and pay the exorbitant prices that the landfill charges to dump these products. So I think we need to be very careful and think about the unintended consequences that we might have if we determine that we're not going to have a transfer station here in Pleasanton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's my last speaker card on item number 10. If you would like to speak on the transfer station, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, public comment is hereby closed. We're bringing it back to council, same order, same starting position. Councilmember Gatos.
Sure. I appreciate staff and Pleasant Garbage Service collaborating and getting... I appreciate staff and Pleasanton Garbage Service collaborating and getting, getting on the same page as far as putting a structure forward of six months to try to figure out a, you know, this, or look into the feasibility of keeping what, what I think the subcommittee, councilmember Iker and I, sort of, we're on the same page that if we have a good thing and we can keep it going, we should. I'm happy the consultant was here and mentioned that who Pleasanton Garbage Service is engaging has had success, sort of co-mingling or coexisting with residential development. And I'll just say, in kind of proposing that, I, I understand that, you know, essentially the, the Kiwet development's going to be sharing a wall, you know, another wall, like Ironwood, right, to, to where the transfer station is, but there were some modeling that was given to us and some ideas around, you know, structuring it so, you know, there were, the, the back or the side of the facility would be a larger structure, and everything would kind of move out and look east, and, and there's ways to use water sprayers and fans to, to, to make it coexist, and I'm hopeful that that can happen, because I see, I think, our residents and the outreach that we did, and I think, you know, 53 or 56% of people saying that we want a competitive process. I mean, I, I frankly am surprised that that number wasn't higher. When I see that, I see 47% of people saying, "I love what we have going. Let's not change anything," where they, they say no to even wanting a competitive bid because they're so happy with what we have. So, you know, I, I see that number as almost extremely supportive of what we have, and so I think we should make a good effort, good faith effort to keep that. You know, just because it, it shocks me a little bit that, you know, when you ask the community to opine whether they want a competitive bidding process for something, and you don't get nearly unanimous support for that or anything above 70 or 80%, I think it means people are very happy with what they have, they're very happy with the rates and the service, as, as I am as a resident. So, you know, whether we can make it work is a different question, but I appreciate, you know, both sides coming to the table and giving it their best, their best effort. So I'm prepared to support the staff recommendation and would make that motion.
Okay. The applicant, or excuse me, PGS asked about the subcommittee involvement. Would you modify the motion to say that, or?
Yes, I think, I mean, I definitely, we have this subcommittee that I would like to have a, a check-in along the way to see how things are going. I think, you know, the, the input that, the design input somewhere along the way, we could, we could get involved in, maybe three months in, we could check in on that and, you know, see how things are going. I, I would be supportive of that. We'll see what everyone else.
Maybe we don't have to make the motion change. We just allow staff to check in.
It, it's how we're going to do it. We're going to, we'll have subcommittee check-ins during the six months.
Sure. No, I figured that would be part of the process, but I'll, you know, maybe table my motion for now and see what other comments want to be, but.
Once you ta, once you make this motion, approve staff recommendation.
I will, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice mayor?
Yeah, I'll second the motion. I do believe that people in general support the concept of going out with an RFP for many kinds of city services, not just, you know, waste or transfer stations or, but just in the name of good governance and seeking the best possible deal for our residents and ratepayers. The fact that going with the staff recommendation will still allow that, if desired, at the end of the six months, you know, keeps the flexibility that we are seeking. So I will support the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tessa?
Yeah, I, I thought the community survey was just wonderful. I mean, it's so seldom that we see so much positive, and to have so much of our community so satisfied with our garbage service. And I agree. I agree with councilmember Gatos. We've used the transfer center often to drop stuff off or recycle things, and I also agree with the comment about, I know our, we don't have a landscaper currently, but in the past when we did, he was always really grateful to have that resource there. So I wouldn't want to lose it, and, and I can see from the community input that our community doesn't want to lose it either, so, and I don't want to see us absorbing huge costs that are going to change our rate structure that significantly. So what I would like to ask is, I've heard a lot from our community that they would like to make sure that our, our garbage contract has the flexibility and for opportunities for alternative recycling. And I would like to ask if the motion could include that that would be a part of this discussion and process. City manager, is that appropriate?
Well, I mean, it's ultimately up to the council, but I would say that if there are things that the council would like us to consider as part of these, these negotiations and these discussions with PGS, now would be the right time to put those forward. And I think, you know, exploring additional recycling and compost and, you know, other alternative stream processes that we could consider as part of the franchise would be appropriate at this stage.
Okay. And really, it isn't to discuss a specific other company. Ridwell, Ridwell has introduced themselves to our community, and there's been a lot of excitement and support over that. But it really is to say that if there is a type of waste that is not being recycled efficiently and, and as was discussed, really, I mean, we hear so often that only a percentage of our recycling actually gets recycled, that it, we, we go to all the effort of sorting it, cleaning it, and sending it, but that it does end up in the landfill instead. So having alternatives that we can feel confident and know that they're not going to, and that's only if our current provider isn't, isn't doing that. It doesn't take away from whoever, but to have that conversation. I've had a lot of members of the community that came out of that meeting that have been following up on this discussion and asking that we do that.
Could you, could you restate your friendly amendment request?
Sure. I would like to include the language that allows a discussion of opportunities for alternative recycling options.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Do you accept the friendly amendment?
I do.
Okay. Vice mayor, do you accept it as the, make the second?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Friendly amendment accepted. Okay. Anything for the councilmember Tessa?
Just, I, I'm very, again, I'm, I'm very pleased that our community is so supportive of our garbage service. They've really been doing a good job. I've always been, they've been very responsive when we've needed large item pickup, and it has kept our community cleaner than communities that don't have that available. People don't leave trash or, or big items on a street corner. They don't abandon stuff, and that's because PGS has done a really good job for us. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Iker?
So Pleasanton is the only community in the tri-valley that has a public transfer station, and I think that's a huge amenity for, for Pleasanton and speaks a lot to our community, and to PGS for being able to maintain that community since, what is it, 19, well, the facilities since their inception, and currently have a 94% satisfaction rating, which is, which is huge, because I, I wonder how many cities can say they have that kind of approval rating for their services. Pleasanton is an, is a very service-intensive community, and I think PGS over the years has risen to, to the level of service that our communities ask for. There's been a lot of different demands on PGS throughout the years, some of which have, have been challenges to get through, and not challenges just for them, but for their competitors as well. A lot of legislative changes that have increased costs and have been challenges for them to get their environmental issues under control. And I, I understand that, and I understand the pain that goes with that for everybody, but that's the environment that we live in, and we need to keep working towards that end as we move forward. I am in full support of the motion and the amendment. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll round us out. Having served on stop waste, the hauler contract is a very interesting one, and appreciate councilmember Gatos serving on that and our subcommittee here. I do think the transfer station is valuable to Pleasanton. I absolutely do. When you need it, you need it. I am particularly concerned about vehicle miles traveled for either option, to be frank, but the direct haul one does concern me with that, given our climate action plans. I don't know how the other cities do it. I honestly don't with the direct haul option from some of them. So that knowledge would be good if, if, you know, if it could come through the process. I'll mention that we have seen recent garbage strikes in cities in Alameda County. Speaking to those mayors, it is not a process that I think Pleasanton wants to go through. I, I just don't think we want to go through that. I am also slightly concerned about the alternative timeline, and we talked about it, but for me, a city facility option and what possible timeline that would require, I would like to try to keep that on the table personally, and, and I don't, I'll let the subcommittee kind of ferret that out when they meet, but I think for long-term Pleasanton, that might be something we want to not just shut away. I, I don't know where everyone else is at on that. But overall, I can support the staff recommendation. As the vice mayor pointed out, it preserves a lot of options for us, so we can keep this conversation going, and it provides the necessary time to, to navigate it. So with that, we have a motion made and seconded.
Can I? I'm sorry.
Yeah, councilmember Tessa.
Um, we, we did receive an email, and I want to just mention it. I don't think it requires another amendment, but it was an email that suggested and requested from someone who lives near the transfer center that there be language that requires covering trucks and cleaning, have a regular cleaning schedule because of debris that falls into the street. So I guess all I would ask is our subcommittee have that conversation, bring that up and see if that's something that's a reasonable thing to include in a future discussion and contract. All right, thank you.
All right. We have a motion made and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Gatos?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Tessa?
Aye.
Mayor Balch?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right. So with that, item number 10 is complete. I noticed we have a boy scout in the back who has to watch the meeting. You may not make it through this one. I'll just tell you, it's okay to cut off when you have to. We're going to move to item number 11. Receive a report on the Dublin Pleasanton BART station concept plan and provide direction on a preliminary site reuse options. Schwed, it's so good to see you. We don't see you very often. Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay, so item number 11, staff?
Thank you, Mayor Balch. So hello and good evening to the city council. As mentioned, tonight we are reviewing the site development options for the BART station site on Owens Drive. Here is an agenda for the presentation, including discussion of the project goals and objectives, a review of the existing conditions, key design elements of options, and a summary of what we've heard so far, both from Planning Commission and at a community meeting. And then finally, a review of next steps before discussion and comments from the city So I'm lucky to be joined tonight by a robust project team. So this includes representatives from design firm Van Meter Williams Pollock, BART staff, other city staff, and the project team also includes, who's not here necessarily tonight, transportation planning firm Fair and Peers, engineering planning firm BKF, strategic economics who completed the market assessment. And I do have a slide, the next slide for a representative from BART to present. So Shannon Dodge, if you don't mind, you'll be at the podium up there. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shannon Dodge, and I'm with BART's Transit Oriented Development Team, and I'm happy to be here tonight to share a bit of brief, brief background on BART's TOD program and provide some context for our collaboration with the city of Pleasanton. So on this slide, you can see a snapshot of BART's land and a little bit about why we do Transit Oriented Development, or TOD. We own 250 acres of developable land. It's actually the most of any public agency in the region. Across our 27 stations, and they're in 22 different jurisdictions, they have the potential for roughly 28,000 homes, which is a pretty big contribution to the overall regional housing need. And on this slide, you can see that the yellow rings indicate where we have TOD already completed or currently under construction. The blue indicates where Transit Oriented Development is in our development pipeline with a developer already identified and working with BART. And then green shows sites where we expect to develop in the future. Some of the major benefits of TOD at BART stations include developing our ridership. We know that people who live at BART stations are, of course, quite a bit more likely to ride BART versus others. It's also core to BART's contribution to reducing greenhouse gases, and it lowers the cost of living for residents at BART. Next slide, yes, thanks. So it's helpful to get a sense of the visual impact that TOD can have on a community. Here you can see before and after images of two of our prior TOD developments at our San Leandro and Pleasant Hill stations. And in both of the top images, you can see some of the parking lots that used to surround these stations, and then below are images of the two TODs. So at San Leandro, the new building shown here at the lower left, which is one of two that's been built at that station, includes 115 affordable apartments on top of garage parking for BART riders. And then on the lower right, you can see the Contra Costa Center Transit Village, which delivered over 600 homes, most of which are market-rate apartments, as well as about 35,000 square feet of retail and a standalone BART garage. Similar to what you see here, the concept for the Pleasanton parking lots at the station that we're discussing would be to build on the surface parking lots to create new housing and a new public plaza. And I'll pass it back to Schwedabon. Thank you.
Thank you. So why is the city planning for this site? It's been in the housing element for the past 10-plus years. The last housing element, the sixth cycle, committed the city to advance planning for the site for housing. There's strong support in both BART policies and state law for housing at this location, specifically near transit and increased density near transit. This process also allows the city to develop consensus between the city and BART and other stakeholders around the parameters for development of the site. And so all of this is really to inform a future RFP that would be issued by BART to developers to further housing on, on the site itself. So accordingly, accordingly, the goals for this, this meeting tonight is to provide the council an introduction for the project and then gather feedback. So the council's feedback would be appreciated regarding the development scenarios, which we'll go through in just a few moments. There's a draft vision and planning objectives, and then issues of concern that may need further study. And so, again, all of this would, would sort of feed towards the RFP, but before the RFP would be a development framework that would have the themes and options that are being discussed tonight. So here, here's a timeline that indicates what we've done so far, where we are and where we're headed. The project kicked off earlier this year in April. Draft meetings, or excuse me, draft materials for public review were provided at a community meeting in September, at Planning Commission in October, and of course, at this meeting tonight. And then the related technical assistance grants bubble there that you see is referring to additional grants that the city has received, and these would specifically be to facilitate a part- a parking management and station access study. So that is something that the project team will be working on. And then again, the results of that analysis would also be folded into that framework, which would be brought back to council for final review. So with these introductory remarks, I'm going to turn it over at this time to Rick Williams. He's from Van Meter Williams Pollock, and he's going to go through some of the design elements.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Rick Williams with Van Meter Williams Pollock, and we've been working with the city, the BART staff, as well as community and the rest of the consultant team to develop an overall reuse options for this Pleasanton BART station site. And we've really started with goals and objectives. Next, please. Can you do that, or should I pass it? Should I do it myself? Okay. So these are a few of the highlighted goals and objectives. There will be, there's actually an extensive list, and this will be eventually voted on by both the BART board and the city for acceptance of the goals and objectives. And just a few of them include encouraging neighborhood vitality, addressing regional housing needs, it's already been discussed, as well as building affordable housing and creating a high-quality plaza for a gathering space for the community as well. Next, please. I'll quickly go over existing conditions and opportunities and constraints. These have been mapped out, discussed with many different departments and facilities. There's the new proposed Tri Valley Link, the Valley Link Station opportunity that may come to this station in the future. There's the ability for a new plaza and the Iron Horse Trail upgrades, as well as new improvements along Owen's Drive. And there are limitations around the plaza due to the fuel pipeline and others that limit certain areas for development. But there's also a lot of great opportunities on the site. These are large parcels. They're generally flat. They're well-developed for high-density mixed-use developments, and they are not adjacent to single-family neighborhoods, which also is a positive when looking at taller buildings, et cetera. Also, the Tri Valley Event Center being envisioned could really activate the area as well as some of the positives around the site. Next, please. There are going to be some new improvements coming to site. In late 2026, BART is working on the improvements for the Iron Horse Trail. There's going to be a new trail running through the station with a two-way bicycle track and new landscaping, stormwater management, lighting, trees, et cetera, which is going to enhance the existing plaza and the existing circulation and improve bike access in the area tremendously. Next, please. We understand that one of the big issues to be discussed is the existing BART rider parking. And you really have to look at this not as just what's on one side of the track or the other, but you have to look at it comprehensively about what's in the whole Pleasanton-Dublin station. And there are significant parking facilities at each. On the Pleasanton side, there's about 1,350 parking spaces. On the Dublin side, there's a garage with over 1,500 spaces and totaling over 1,800 spaces on that site. Plus, there's also the county garage, which has another 500 spaces. So altogether, there's around 3,650 parking spaces on the, around the BART station site. And so there's significant parking facilities that currently are being, the BART facilities and some updated information are around 60% utilized at this time, on the peak periods and peak days of use. Not every day along it, but that's kind of the peak periods of use. So there's a lot of excess parking facilities at the site currently. Next, please. So there's going to be a couple of things that are going to be happening in this next, in this coming year. One is there's going to be a new parking study, which will give us better information and new information on new strategies on how to maximize alternative modes of transit and travel to get to the BART station, a new access plan, which will facilitate and hopefully reduce the number of people that drive single occupancy vehicles to the station. Also, you have to think of this as a future. This will kind of get developed once, and there'll be a lot of different new modes of transit. I actually, this weekend, took my first driverless vehicle car experience. So there's a lot of new ways that people are getting to the station, but BART is really facilitating biking and walking and being dropped off at the station rather than parking a vehicle there all year, all day long. And there's a really good reason for that. Parking is one of the most expensive things to build in a development. Any developer will tell you structured parking is expensive with all of the criteria for BART parking for safety and facilities. The parking spaces are about $80,000 a space. And that's just in building it. It's another $1,000 a year for every space for operating it and maintaining it and keeping it clean and all the other aspects of BART parking. So at that cost, minimizing the amount of parking that is needed while having an appropriate, right-sized amount of parking is also a tricky balance. And this new study that's going to be done is going to be able to help respond to the question of how much parking do we actually need? And you have a lot of people that park from outside of the community, and could they park on the Dublin side, or do they have to park on the Pleasanton side? And how many Pleasanton riders actually take it are all questions that I think can be answered more efficiently in the next coming months. So that will be important. The other thing is, there used to be a number of different funding sources for providing parking at any of the BART stations, and a lot of those have dried up over the years. Those, or if they haven't been completely eliminated, they're very, very, very competitive. So it's a challenge to get funding for BART parking. And so no matter what number of parking spaces is desired by the city and BART and the community, there's going to need to be a funding source made available, and I think that's going to be a big effort between the city and BART to try to gather any of that funding source. What we've tried to do in the initial planning is to be very flexible about the way we kind of design a plan so that a variety of different answers can be integrated into that concept. And I'll bring that forth at the end of the presentation. There are other, next, please. There are other major issues to think about, though, and the regulatory and planning context has changed with the Assembly Bill AB 2923, which really sets a series of minimum requirements that any city has for zoning on a BART station. And just the big key ones are minimum of five stories in height. That's a minimum, not a maximum. The density is a minimum of 75 dwelling units per acre. And over time, Pleasanton has had 35 dwelling units an acre and up to 50 dwelling units an acre. So this is another jump up to 75 dwelling units an acre. There is a minimum of 20% affordable units, which is a little bit higher than the city's requirement of 15%. BART's policy overall with their system is 35%. So, but the actual requirement is 20% of affordable units. And the city has its subjective design standards, and these will help shape the buildings and open spaces and street frontages consistent with other multifamily, high-density and mixed-use projects within the community. Next, please. There has also, as part of this process, been a market assessment. And just kind of give you a couple of highlights. Generally, this has always been thought of, and it is still consistently thought of as being a, primarily a high-density residential development site with a small amount of retail and community-serving uses for BART riders and residents of the TOD and maybe the surrounding hacienda business park. There have been some recent thinking that it might, there might be a longer-term play for one of the development sites for possibly a unique office space or a unique hotel or a unique medical facility or educational facility as part of any plan. But that's kind of a long-term goal, and it may be that the development community will look at it and think that it is a all predominantly residential development. And that's something that is, I think, a shared understanding between both city staff and BART staff at this time. And there will be other smaller complementary uses as well. Next, please. Some of the design elements. So when you look at the site, it really lays out with the central plaza, and then between Willow Road, there's really probably two development sites on the west. And then on the eastern side, Sites 3 and 4, could be separate development sites, and they could vary in size, but they're fairly large, almost four plus or minus acres. Or it could be one complete development site. It would be a little bit higher density and larger and more efficient to develop as one site. So we're looking at three or four parcels and spread out around 11.3 acres of various development capacity on the site net. Next, please. So there are a couple of framework ideas that we're looking at and exploring, and there's really, the main one is circulation around dropping off at the BART station. We're anticipating that there would be drop-off along Owen's Drive for BART and maybe for residential drop-offs as well. And then on the left, the turnaround circulation is a simple extension of Willow Road into the station and a loop around and back out, which would provide access for BART drop-off for accessible parking or for accessible drop-off rather than the drop-offs along the street so that they can get people that need a little more assistance to be closer to the station. The other concept is doing a loop, again, in and out from Willow Road and in and out along Owen's Drive, and that would provide a loop frontage, additional drop-off space, and BART's accessible drop-off being on the plaza. There are pros and cons with having the drive along the plaza as well. Maybe if there was retail, there might be some access and good for servicing the retail, but it would also bring cars and vehicles closer to the plaza. So we're evaluating both of those strategies currently. Next, please. One of the other exciting parts of the plan that isn't about just the development is that enhancing the bike access and bike frontage and pedestrian frontage along Owen's Drive, including either a separated example of a separated bike lane that is not part of the vehicle circulation or having one that's integrated into the drive are both different options that are being evaluated. The community and the city staff and BART have all pretty much weighed in that they like the idea of a separated bike system, which fits in well with the current biking that's in the area. So that would be something that we're looking at. But I think that a lot of people like the separated bike system rather than integrating into the traffic lanes as well. And then the next one is the plaza. Now, this is going to be a very large plaza. It's not going to be the small one that's there now. It would extend all the way down to Owen's Drive. It'd be very wide. It would be lined by buildings and active street, and active frontage along it. It'll still feel like a very large gathering space that will have places within it also. And so the design of that and the enhancement of that as both a gathering space as well as circulation through and also an activity generation space is really an exciting element that could be really a key dramatic entry point for BART patrons coming in and out into the community of Pleasanton. And we'd like any feedback you can provide us on the activities you think are appropriate for that space as well. Next, please. We also did some holding capacity test fits, and we do these to test all, after you've incorporated all the circulation, the plaza, and you have these different development sites, how much, using what we consider generally acceptable types of building development within the area that can be economically feasible, looking at those, testing them by actually laying out not an actual proposed building, but a test fit building to see how many units, how many parking spaces we can fit on the site. We did two different test fits, and we try to do it to bracket the conversation, kind of what's kind of the low end of the holding capacity and what's kind of the high end of the holding capacity. And so we've done this on test fit one is generally what we think of as being the lower end of the development capacity. Site one and two include the potential for a wrapped building with a parking garage in the middle, which would facilitate BART parking on the western end of the property. And that would be in site one. And then site two would also be about a five-story courtyard building. It could either have parking under it or not have parking under it. It could also be in the parking garage. And then Sites 3 and 4 could be standalone individual buildings, or they could be developed together as a whole. And depending on the average unit size, we got a range of about 870 to 1,100 housing units on the site, which is a substantial amount of housing. And think of that as 20% of that minimum would be affordable housing. So we looked at this and bracketed that. And that parking garage, depending on how tall or how short it is, and it's wrapped by residential, so you wouldn't actually see it, that really has the flexibility to adapt to the number of parking spaces that the next parking study will have in providing it. And this showed it on the west side, and on the next test fit, we moved the parking over to the east side, so that could be evaluated as well. And so on this one, we have the parking structure on Site 3 and 4, which we've combined into Site 3, and we have five to eight stories of housing. And then we also have a parking garage that could be five or six, could technically be eight stories as well. And then on Sites 1 and 2, that's where we have the individual developments with parking. And on each of these, the state mandate is that there be a maximum of one-to-one parking. So we've designed these to have the one-to-one parking for the residential development. And then the BART parking in this case would be at the eastern side of the parking, which is if people are coming off the freeway, it's maybe the easiest, quickest access point in that location. In this scheme, given that we went up to seven stories on the two individual Sites 1 and 2, and up to eight stories on Site 3, our range of housing is about 1,050 units to 1,300 units. And that, again, meets and slightly exceeds the 75 dwelling units per acre. But this, these are just two different test scenarios. There's many, many, many different ways that a developer may take a look at that in responding to an RFP. But these provide kind of a sense of bracket of what the sites could hold with an overall capacity of somewhere between about 870 and 1,300 units. And a flexible amount of BART parking. And a flexible amount of BART parking depending on what, what the study eventually holds and how much funding can be obtained for it. And with that, I'm going to pass it back over to Schwedder to outline some of the other feedback we've received. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. So just to summarize some of the feedback we received at the October 22nd Planning Commission meeting, there was general support to develop the site for housing to meet RENA goals and then to also create more vibrancy in the area. There was some concern related to fewer BART rider parking spaces that would be a result of the housing that would be developed. So that was voiced by more than one commissioner. Related to the density and height, most commissioners expressed support, again, for the housing. One commission member did question the number of proposed building stories, but overall there was a lot of support for affordable housing on the site. One commissioner raised the point of the actual benefit the city would receive from, from the development. Related to the type of development and the proposed uses, there was some questions related to whether the units were rental for sale, whether the site could actually sustain an active retail use without extended vacancy. And then in general, the commission expressed a lot of support for the plaza along the Iron Horse Trail. And then finally, regarding the Owens Drive improvements, two members of the public did speak related to this topic and expressed a lot of support for a protected bike lane. And then secondly, expressed support or encouraged improvements to the crossing at the trail where it meets Owens Drive because that is a bit awkward as it is right now. And then to summarize what we heard at the September community meeting, similar themes, overall support for the site, some caution to providing adequate BART rider parking, enhancement to other options, for example, bus frequency or bicycling. And then the look, feel, and scale density should feel appropriate for, for Pleasanton. And then attendees also referenced plazas from other locations. They liked the concept of having a large plaza on this particular site, and then also expressed support for the Owens Drive improvements. And then to summarize the next steps, so we would integrate feedback from what we've heard so far from the public planning commission and then tonight from city council, along with the results of the parking management and station access study into a draft framework plan. And then we're encouraging, of course, anybody to, to provide their feedback. They can sign up for email updates if they're interested. And then for council's consideration, we did develop some discussion questions. So I'll just read these one by one, and then the council can decide how it would like to proceed with the discussion. But does the city council have any comments regarding the site development scenarios, meaning building height, maximum units? Secondly, does the city council have any feedback on any of the other topics included in the staff report, meaning the plaza, the non-residential uses, or anything else? Thirdly, is the city council generally supportive of the concepts that were presented tonight? And then lastly, sort of a catch-all, does the council have any general other feedback that it would like incorporated into the plan? So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the project team would be more than happy to answer any questions as well, so I can turn it over to the mayor at this time.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for the presentation. You're not a stranger to the Pleasanton council, so. Okay, so we do have some speaker cards, but we'll go with questions first. It's the same order, different starting position. Vice Mayor, you're up, clarifying questions of staff.
I just jotted a few of them down here. I'm not asking them in any particular order. Are there any PG&E natural gas transmission lines that go through the area?
I don't think they run that tight on.
There is a major gas transmission pipeline that runs through the, sort of diagonally through the site that would, would lie underneath the plaza. That's one of the reasons why that's planned as a non-development area is to preserve the setbacks that are required for the pipeline.
So that's one of the reasons for that?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Let me see here. I share the concern that was mentioned about can that plaza area sustain an active retail presence? That would be great if it could. I think all of us would like to, well, I'd love to see a plaza there with some of the, some of the amenities as described. I don't know what a Paris Riverfront Plaza is, but maybe you could tell me, but that sounds very attractive, Scandinavian Community Center. But can, what are your thoughts on can it sustain an active retail presence?
You know, I think the economic study did indicate that that may be there, right? You have a, right now, not a particularly welcoming environment. I think if you were to add 1,000 housing units, daily commuters, and create an environment that feels attractive and welcoming, there's not a lot of pedestrian-oriented amenities in that part of Pleasanton. And so nobody wants to build an empty vacant retail storefront, so our goal would be to design that use in a way that would be populated and would be active. It may not be retail, it may be other, you know, other uses. Rick mentioned, for example, you know, a small branch library, a community space, childcare. Yeah, there's, there's a number of things that could be in ground floor, but, but be an active and vibrant contributor to the plaza. We don't, we don't want to set up the spaces to fail.
Right, right. Okay. I believe the, the area had a couple of, or maybe just one, retail shack there, those little buildings for a little while. I tried to support it myself, but it wasn't very, it wasn't a very good location for retail. But I understand what you're saying. We try and make it, do some placemaking, I guess is the right term. Okay. So I know that the various types of construction, we talked about podium construction, wraparound and courtyard. My understanding is that each of those has, you know, a different kind of sweet spot for developers in terms of size, number of units, et cetera, et cetera. Is that a consideration, and you'd agree with that statement?
I'd invite actually Rick up to answer that one since he's been involved in many, many projects that have been constructed over, over time, so.
Yeah, not, not that we're in the business as a council of providing the best possible environment for developers, but I'm just curious.
Yeah. So in doing the test fits that we did, we used, there's a couple of things you're trying to do. You're trying to get developments that are a certain size, and the developers have a sweet spot of 250 to 350 units often. And then also, there's another sweet spot that's in the 500 plus or minus unit space. And so that's why we studied them both ways. The larger developments are using wrap construction, so you have a garage, which is the most cost-effective construction, and then you wrap it with residential to hide it, and then you have standard wood frame construction, and that would be up to five stories. And then they add two or three, one, two or three levels of concrete if they feel like their market is such that they can add additional above it. Generally speaking, the most cost-effective ones will be predominantly five or six stories with most of the garage, most of the concrete being in the garage. So there's a sweet spot at 250 to 350 units in each of those development sites. And then there's also another sweet spot if you're doing the large site that might be up to 500 plus or minus units.
For a wrap or for a courtyard and?
Typically, there's a wrap, which will have courtyard housing within it, but the wrap is referred to how they park it versus a podium where they'll have two or three stories of concrete for the garage and then a courtyard within it on top of the garage. There's usually nothing on top of the parking garage other than solar panels when you do a wrap building. So we've used the types of product, the types of buildings that are, been typically found in and around the Bay Area and to get that kind of magical density and unit count for each of the development sites. And there's a mix. You can do some in one and some of the other, and you can break some of those buildings up into two buildings, and maybe you'll have a freestanding affordable building rather than have it be integrated into the building itself, the one single building. So we've studied in multiple different ways. It doesn't substantively change the unit counts, and so we tried to show you and illustrate the bracket of kind of the lower end of the bracket being mostly all five stories with a couple of seven, and the upper end of the bracket where most of it's seven and eight, thinking that of all the places in Pleasanton that don't impact other neighborhoods, this might be the place to get your RENA numbers and think about getting the maximum out of a transit-oriented development. So that's why we bracketed those in that such a way.
Okay. Did I, you know, I saw test fits one and two described here, and test fit two had an option as well with a taller building, right?
Yes, it was to be up to eight stories. If it was just a five, five to six-story option, it was once, and then up, to get up to the 1,300 units, you'd have an eight-story building.
And would that primarily be for the purpose of RENA numbers or?
It would be both feasibility and if they, if it's a really strong market, you know, it all comes down to exactly when you hit the market. If there's a hot market, lots of people are looking for new, new housing next to a BART station, or maybe they've already set, created the plaza and built the first two blocks, then suddenly this is the one that's going to make, you know, really pay for itself, so to speak, and maximize the unit count because you've already created a great place and people are excited about being there and things like that.
Right, right. You, you hit upon a good point about market conditions, you know, when, if this is approved for construction, I don't know, five, six years from now perhaps, you know, market conditions may be such that, you know, some of these concepts either don't pencil out for developers, or maybe they, they'd rather have fewer units than what would be allowed. So how, how does, for example, density bonus factor in? And did you look at that for the test fits?
What we did in the test fits was try to maximize the number of units within a building envelope, which we felt was really efficient and would meet developers' smell test, so to speak. So within that, we didn't add an additional density bonus on top of it because basically if, depending on the number of affordable units, if you have 35%, you're going to be able to be kind of unlimited. But what you're really limited by is construction costs. And construction costs will basically, at this point, would probably limit us to an eight-story building because you could do five stories in wood frame and three stories in concrete. It would be a big jump to go taller than that with an all-concrete building.
Right, right.
Somebody might propose one in a later phase. It might be just a small portion of the development, but we're anticipating that this is a pretty aggressive holding capacity number, given that if they decided they were going to do a whole bunch of small senior units, they might get a few more units out of it, but that would be a different market than what we're anticipating here. It might be a part of the market, but it's not going to be a substantial part of it.
Okay. Do I understand that the, the TOD law, AB, whatever it is that allows, you know, that set up BART to, you know, construct these types of communities, allows buildings to go up to nine stories tall? Is that right? Do I have that right?
They, they actually have a minimum. They don't necessarily have a maximum. So technically, that said, most, you'd say, all, almost all of the BART stations currently, unless they're right in downtown, are really looking at buildings that are five, six, seven, eight stories.
Yeah, still, you know, eight stories would be, I don't know if we have any buildings that, that tall in Pleasanton.
Let's see, it's about the size of some of the Kaiser office building in that, in that height range. So you do have some in Hacienda Business Park that are pretty large.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't have that many stories, but their stories are taller.
Right.
So it's, it's the same height, it's just slightly different.
You mentioned the experience at other sites that have already been developed. What are the top several things that you've learned or that we have learned or that BART has learned from that process so far?
So I can let BART answer for them, but what we've seen is that both BART, the cities and the development community have really been focused on placemaking. They've been focused on a plaza or open space, some of it's green, some of it's hardscape, and really looked at that, using that minimal amount of retail, commercial, active ground floor to activate the, the plaza or the park or whatever. Each one is slightly different, but they all have a public open space, and that they're really focused on placemaking. One of the things is that BART wants to be, have a very attractive entry to their station, and that's kind of facilitated with the plaza, and they want it safe and active and vibrant. And actually, the development community wants that also. So while, yes, retail is a challenge at, at many BART stations and in many places, every place now with the, with the, since COVID, it's been tough on retail more than anything else. The developers that generally are looking at developing a BART station is a very select group that can get through the whole process and understands what BART wants and what the communities want. And they have a tendency of really curating the retail space. Retail space isn't something they just create and then throw away after they get their approvals or don't bother trying to fill it. They see the retail as an amenity for their housing because if they have a cool, interesting cafe, if they have a cool, interesting space, a maker space, something that's attractive, that actually attracts residents, it attracts people that want to rent there. And, and so there are, it's a slightly higher sophisticated group of developers that we see developing the BART stations, and we think that overall, they're more successful than, than other developers who are just generally, some of them just generally are kind of throwing the retail space in, but then they don't really try to lease it that much. And so it's really something where you've got to have a retail group within your wing that really knows what they're doing. And that's what we're seeing in the most recent couple of responses to developers' RFPs on these. And I think that's a BART focus because they don't want empty retail either, and it's also a focus for most of the development community.
Okay. So do I understand that BART is the ultimate decider when it comes to, you know, the RFPs, RFQs and the selection of contractors?
Yes, I believe that's generally the case, but they do take input from the city and, and stuff. But the BART board is actually the ultimate decider of who they select for in an RFP process. But most of the, having been involved in a number of them, I'd say all of them that we've been involved in, the cities are very active participants in the process.
Okay. Yeah, I just have a few more comments, and I have them written down here. Let me just.
Are questions?
I mean, I mean, questions. There are questions, yes. I have a number of dog-eared pages here. I think I already asked about that. Summary of the test fit options, we had the summary of the phasing scenarios. We haven't talked about the phasing scenarios yet, I don't believe. There were three different phasing scenarios recommended here or studied, summarized. Can your mind, does any one of them stick out over the others?
So here's the key to the phasing, and this is a BART policy, and that is, it's around parking. Once a parking number is decided, and that's decided by the board after the studies and everything, it's, the, the BART parking requirement, so to speak, is an internal decision that the BART board makes. Once they've decided that, the way the phasing has to work is such that the, the parking on- on the sites as they go through the development cannot drop below whatever that number that they select is. So not exactly knowing what the number is going to be, the, if you decide that you, the BART parking is going to be on the eastern end of the site, then you're going to have to have enough parking for them to build that parking structure and the housing development around it. And you'll have to have the other parking still available. So if they started on the west end with the BART parking, it doesn't have to be the first phase, but you can't, you ought to always have that many parking spaces available, whatever that number is during the phasing. So we studied it in three different ways to play with what if this and what if that. It's really will be up to the developer eventually, but they'll have a requirement at some point before the RFPs let, they'll know how many operational parking spaces they have to have.
Okay. So basically it comes down to a lot of other, you know, the way construction operates, constructability and sequencing.
That's right.
Terms a lot. Okay. Only other question I had, and maybe it's for Director Clark, is regarding the, the laws requirements around RENA and the, the TOD law for BART. Does the TOD law override what our objectives in our arena housing element aspire to?
The way that our housing element is written says we, we do have density ranges and so on, but it does say ultimately we will defer to state law. I mean, ultimately that is going to be the, the standard that we have to abide by as the city. So through this planning process, we're, you know, obviously refining our, our expectations around that, but ultimately state law does dictate what the city has to allow for at this station.
Okay. Ultimately, could that lead to revisions in our housing element that we would have to put through for this, these particular parcels?
No, I mean, the way, the way that the law is going is generally to be more permissive and to allow for more. So right now we have a fairly, I'll say conservative estimate of housing production of about 550 units on the site. As Rick described, you know, the, any of the scenarios that would develop are significantly more than that. And then state law generally is inching up in terms of the maximums that are permitted. So it's really going to come down to a constructability, feasibility and development partnership that will yield a number of units that's consistent with whatever the minimums required by state law are.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your answering my questions. That's all for now.
Okay. Councilmember Tessa?
Okay. So, um, let's see. There was a, a question at one of the community events about whether it was rental or ownership. What was the answer there?
I, I can't speak to that in terms of past projects. I suspect most of it's rental. Maybe Rick, you can speak from experience there.
So there's two, there's two things that really are impacting that question and what the answer is. And that is, one, BART does not sell the property when they do an RFP. Generally they lease the property for a long-term lease. And thus rental has been the most, the most selective. And the reason is, is that if it was going to be for sale, it would be a condominium. And not owning, having that building not own the property underneath it creates a, it reduces the value of the condominiums and it basically makes it relatively infeasible. So they've studied that over time to see if they could make it work on any different instances and different economic consultants have studied that over time. And really it hasn't made financial sense because you lose, I've heard 20 to 25% plus or minus, could be even more on a condominium if you don't own the land underneath it. So it's, it's really the policy that BART has because they're going to be around with their transit agency a lot longer than all of us, that they just lease the land rather than sell it.
Right. Okay. So that's what I would have expected is rental only. But you're saying it's not locked into being rental only, there could possibly be a variation.
I, I think that it's the issue that they don't own the property underneath, so no one's ever gone in that direction.
Okay. All right. That's, that's reasonable. That's what I would have expected. So are, how many bedrooms do we expect? Are these one-bedroom units? Are we thinking these are just young professionals or do we anticipate families?
We would anticipate families on this to a certain extent. We used a mix in our holding capacity study and the ranges of square footage of units was between 850 and 1,000 square feet per unit on the average across it. Most market rate developers will do around 10% three bedrooms and then 40% two bedrooms and 40% one bedrooms and another 10% studios. That's a very general percentage mix, but we used something similar to that in our test fits because that's what we see generally in the marketplace. If it's an affordable housing, if, if they do a standalone building that's affordable housing and they're going for tax credit financing, they have to have 50% of the unit, 25% threes, 25% twos, and then the rest a mix of ones and studios. And a lot of the nonprofits or even for-profit developers will do a little bit more two bedrooms because those are kind of a sweet spot. And in the market rate world, you're probably getting 50% twos and threes, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. And this is a generally thought of as a friendly family market and a positive family market due to schools, et cetera. So we would anticipate them having approximately that amount, 50%, 40% twos, 10% threes.
Okay. So then I, I like the plaza, but if we are anticipating families there, I didn't see any kind of tot lot or any, or is there a consideration there of a space for children?
Each of the buildings has a very large courtyard. And I wouldn't anticipate that courtyard is going to have children's play areas, barbecue areas, gathering spaces. Out here you might even find a pool or two. That would be typical in a market rate development. And these are very, it's hard to tell what a scale is on those, but those are like 200 foot long courtyards. There's, they're very ample size and you could have lots of play areas. And then they're internal to the development and, and very safe and secure.
Yeah. Okay. Well, since we're giving input, that's certainly something I would want to see is space for children if we're doing family housing. So the sweet spot discussion of the stories, I, I would hope to not see taller than five stories. I think five stories in Hacienda makes sense, but eight stories I think is not what I would expect to see in Pleasanton. And I always thought that the cost really was more in the four to five story where it was more, I thought developers were avoiding over five stories these days.
They're, they're doing four over ones, which is a type five building is the most cost effective because right at this one instant in time, the market is very tough to do anything more than that. But we're anticipating that this isn't even going to start for four or five years from a construction standpoint. That's kind of eons. So we're bracketing it because we're anticipating that you're going to have two stories with type fi, with type 3A on top, which would be five stories on top. So you'd probably get seven stories. I think it'd be very unique to see the eight stories. It's probably five, six, seven is what I would see the most of. But we wanted to bracket it to see, you know, what you could actually physically do and still be within the cost ramification. But we're seeing lots of seven story buildings right now.
Okay. Well, since the first question is, what does council think about heights? I would, my input would be five, six being an, an extreme, but, and, um, let's see, the, you said that we currently have 1,350 spaces in Pleasanton.
Pleasanton minus, on the Pleasanton side.
In the Pleasanton side, total between Pleasanton, Dublin, 3,650. But, so I know we don't have an answer yet because we haven't done the parking study, but how close are we going to be to replacing? And I think the one-to-one on the, the units is a reasonable, in fact, I'm glad that we're going to have at least one space per each unit. But I am concerned about the replacement of the BART rider parking. So what do we think we might be looking at?
To be truthfully honest, I don't know. I think it's not going to necessarily just be by a test of how many, I think there's different ways you can decide what that is. And one of the things is a lot of the people that use the BART parking aren't Pleasanton residents or even Dublin residents. They come from way farther out.
Yeah. I read your, I read the report. It said that only 35% I think are Pleasanton residents. Most of the rest are coming from Tracy and Livermore.
So the, the question is, are you wanting to provide a certain number that you can't just be for Pleasanton residents? Or do you want to direct more of the people that are coming from Tracy or Livermore to the Dublin side where there's also excess parking available? It's interesting, we actually studied it. If you go to your Google Maps and you go to see where, where do you park if you come from Tracy, it actually takes you to the Pleasanton side.
You know, I saw that in the report that the suggestion was, don't worry about it.
You just directed people to the other side. It's not, it's a one minute difference or less than a minute difference. So I think that education and signage and stuff could actually influence where people park a lot more than people think. And if you, and I think the biggest challenge will be in parking is not, is not going to be determining what the number eventually is. It's going to be finding the money to pay for that parking because BART's not in the parking building business and the developers can't really build a lot of BART parking also. So there has to be grants that come together and that's how all the other parking structures in the, in the BART system more recently have been built. So it's going to be about BART and the city working together to, to obtain grants that will begin to say how much parking can fit on the site.
I'm confused. It seems to me it's BART's responsibility. You guys are, it is, you know, for your riders, okay, I apologize.
I think, I think that you're asking an honest question and I'm trying to give you an honest answer because it's, it's just, it's a different, it's a different system than it was when it was built in 1960. And, and I think that's really going to be the, the biggest challenge and hurdle for, for everybody.
Right. Okay. So again, since we're giving feedback.
We're in the clarifying questions. We have public speakers, so just to.
I thought we were going, we've got a screen here.
We are, we are in clarifying questions and we have public comment that we're going to take in. So we're still on clarifying questions.
All right. Um, so yeah, I think those were my questions for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Iker?
I only have a few. I have a shared concern with Councilmember Nybert over the retail sites at the, considered at the base of the plaza. And only because we have development directly across the street that since it's been open for the last couple of years are still vacant. So nobody's moved in there to, to fill those vacancies. So how active is BART going to be at, and you may or may not be able to answer this or staff may or may not be able to answer it. How active are they going to be at making sure that there's somebody in these storefronts? So that way we're not building something and nobody comes to it.
Well, as I answered before on this, I think that you get a different type of developer who is developing at a BART station. They have the same challenges gaining retail tenancy. And they're not going to build more than they think they can fill because it's expensive to do that. They will do a better job at curating and I, I think, I've been watching that same site because I was involved in design review of that development. And I think that hanging a sign up that says for lease or for rent is not curating a space. And I think that what you'll find is that while it will still be a challenge, the development community that is looking to build at a BART station is more sophisticated and will actually really work hard to fill those spaces because they see it as an amenity, an attractive amenity. And they don't want a nuisance. They want an attractive amenity at their front door. And that's what they get with the plaza because they're also going to be investing a lot of money in that plaza. And that is really, I think, a critical, a critical part. There are different types of developers. There are developers that really understand mixed use development and then there are residential developers that have a little bit of mixed use development in their buildings. And I think you get the better side of it with the development community that's willing to work through all of the efforts that you have to, to, to get through a BART site development.
Okay. And I'm not sure if you can answer this or, but it's going to have to do with parking because I, you know, I think we all see that parking is going to become an issue out there. But aren't the parking needs associated with economic conditions at the, at the time of the development? You know, like prior to COVID, BART parking at our, in the Pleasanton side was full and then it reduced because of COVID and hasn't quite come back yet. Wouldn't we, when they're doing their parking assessment, take those factors into consideration as opposed to necessarily what, what BART wants it to look like? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think we've, we've all had these conversations and I think that there's going to be a variety of different things. You could also look at what happens if ValleyLink connects directly into the BART station and all those people from the Valley could actually just take ValleyLink versus driving. So there's lots of variables to this and we don't know what all the answers are right now, but I think that the study will, will discuss each of them.
Perhaps your question, there is, there is in the, in the scope of the parking study, there is a future looking piece of it. We're not taking today's conditions as necessarily, or in fact, pre-CO, you know, pre-COVID conditions as, as representative of what the future will look like.
It's not a point in time.
No, it's going to, they will have, but it's, you know, we can't perfectly predict the future, so there will be a trend analysis. BART will be providing ridership numbers and, and looking at a number of things, you know, new development coming online, various other things, right? We're, we're going to do our best to try and frame what that future condition will look like, you know, because we are equally concerned that we do, you know, provide and manage the parking appropriately. And so as we've discussed, the, the replacement parking at 1,300 units is going to be a heavy lift from a, you know, a feasibility perspective. So we have to be more, I think, flexible in our thinking about how we, we manage parking, not just at this station, but the entire walking distance radius around the BART station to make it and maximize the space and the use that we have, whether it's curbside, shared parking, you know, time limited parking that really gets people to, to use that, the available parking as efficiently as possible.
Okay. Well, I, and I think you made an interesting comment that ValleyLink, you know, potentially has the opportunity of reducing the need for parking. I look at it from a different perspective that maybe it increases the need for parking because now you've increased opportunities for our community to move in another direction using ValleyLink. So maybe they're going upstream instead of downstream where I think from a BART perspective, they're looking at the feeder and it's not necessarily the in-stream that's, that's. And it's not necessarily the in-stream that's, that's important, it can be the outstream. But I'm getting into commentary, so I'll go on to questions. Do we know what the height of the buildings are that are adjacent? And how this would, how, let's just say a seven-story building, as they're proposing, would, would compare to that?
So Hacienda today allows up to eighty-five feet in this area. Just for reference, I think the, the Workday Building, which is, I think, the tallest building in Pleasanton at this point, is about a hundred and six to a hundred and ten feet at its type. As Rick mentioned, it's, it's six stories, but those stories have a very tall plate height. Rick, you might be able to speak to the relationship between height and stories.
Actually, in the seventy-five-foot range. So that, we would expect a seven-story building to be seventy-five to eighty feet tall. And they can be with wood frame, you can be up to eighty-five feet to the roof plus a parapet. So it could be like ninety feet altogether. But, and that's because of building code. So the building code is what really constrains the building heights.
And that's not a problem for us to service that type of a building in an, in an emergency? In our current conditions?
No, in fact, to get up, to get beyond the five, plus five or six-story height, which is a type five building, you have a type three A building. And the whole rules around a type three A building are different. You still have to have fire department access and we've kind of built that into it. But you don't have emergency egress windows anymore. They don't use, on the taller buildings, they don't use emergency egress windows, only on type five, slower buildings. But they just want to get up to the roof and they can get up to the roof with the fire, fire vehicles. And, and that's really the key thing, is having the driveways surrounding it wide enough and close enough and far enough away for the buildings. And we kind of factored that in to the site plans we've done so far in those test fits.
Okay. And my last question is, what does the activity look like that's occurring at other BART plazas? That we might expect to see at ours?
There's a number of services that have been provided. Service uses in the area that are not necessarily typical retail. There's also some retail spaces, cafes, small bakery, uses such as that. The other thing you've seen is some daycares pop up in some of the facilities. Some on the plazas and some not on the plazas. And then we'd also are, have seen some small libraries or a branch library. They're looking at those for, on at least one BART project to have, and they have it kind of factored in. If the city decides to put a library there, they can pay for that podium level of the library. And so they have that factored into the entitlements on that one. So there's a variety of different service uses, small office, small business uses, as well as other, other standard retail types of developments. Some restaurants, but not a lot of restaurants, usually light food service, like a cafe or something.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gatos?
Thank you. Just quickly, is the idea to combine parking between the residential and then for the BART station? Like, the idea that, you know, if you had a wraparound type of parking that folks that were just using the BART station would be able to park in that structure as well?
So the, on the wrap buildings that have both BART parking and residential parking, they'll be segregated.
Right.
Typically, you do X number of stories that are BART parking. And then there's a security process to get through to the upper levels, which would be residential.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, I figured as much, okay. I'm, I'm ready for comments, I don't have any more questions for you, thank you.
Okay, sorry, Rick, I have a few myself behind me. Yeah. My question's related to the two test fits that you had. The parking structure in Site One versus Site Four. Site One is right off of Willow Road, it requires the bulb access, kind of the A1 design. So why would the Easterly option, Test Fit Two, be more advantageous, right? Because it, do you design parking structures at the intersections of, of two roads? Willow and Owens at this case, or can you talk about that?
Sure. Well, the conversation that we had was kind of thinking a little bit with this idea of who is the BART parking on the Pleasanton side generally thought of as four? And if you're thinking of it as Pleasanton residents, just in general, focusing it maybe on the western side might be a little easier access for residents there. And you can access it by going from Willow Road, you can access it from Owens Drive in either direction. You're just going through one more intersection. And it might be a little bit more thought of as Pleasanton side for Pleasanton residents. Even though there is no restriction on who parks there, it's kind of pushing it in that direction. On the other side, we acknowledge that a lot of people are coming from outside of Pleasanton and Livermore and beyond. And maybe that access in that direction and getting people in the BART parking there might be a more reasonable location as well. So we're kind of asking that study to think about those two general locations. This was to, and, and the structures themselves are basically the same size. You could facilitate a slightly larger footprint on, on this side, on the east side. But generally speaking, they're pretty equal in size. And it's really about which one will provide the best access for the various users and which, what does that direction say? And so there's kind of a split in a lot of conversation and we wanted that to be analyzed.
Okay. My second question, and I, I'm looking at Test Fit Two, I apologize, I don't know what you're looking at. But on Test Fit Two, Site Two, this now has the alternative A2 where the, call it the drop-off area is at the plaza, right?
Yes.
So I, I, I heard you talk about the challenge, about what that might represent because it activates the plaza with cars. Whereas the second option has the bulb and it would not have vehicles, right? Here's my question. BART is, is, it's a noisy area, right? It's, it's noisy right now, the, the freeway noise already. So will this plaza be quiet space, more akin to the, the bulb option? Or, or will it, will these buildings help isolate and reduce some of that noise impact and then lend itself to the bulb?
If I was an acoustical engineer, and I'm not.
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
I would, I would say that actually it's probably not going to change it overly dramatically. It will shield some of it, but directly across. Now, if the ValleyLink is built, except for when the rail comes in and out, that will be more of a buffer because it's another solid facility that blocks it. As far as acoustics for inside the buildings, this is actually pretty far away from a freeway standpoint. And we're, we wouldn't be concerned with being able to meet indoor noise and the courtyards will all be very protected. I think you'll still have some ambient noise from the freeway, et cetera. But I think, and it'll be some evaluation, we've shown some breaks in the buildings and things like that. I don't think that the roadway, one way or the other, is going to be a noise generator. It's really a question of, does it benefit the retail to have this, the looped access street there? Might there be a little bit of diagonal parking on it or something like that? Would it help service the retail spaces by having trucks be able to drop supplies and, and, and stuff off goods out on that? So initially, there was the thought that the bulb version was going to be kind of the simple one. But there are some pros to the other option as well. And that's why we wanted the access plan to kind of weigh in on those discussions as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any further questions. Anyone else before we go to public comment? All right, thank you very much. So we have several speaker cards on this at this time. We are at that point. Given the time, we'll go through public comment and then we're going to take a short recess after it. If you would like to speak on this item, please fill out a blue speaker card. They're outside in the Cadenza and then turn them into the city clerk. Our first speaker, I'll call three, and if number two and three can line up along the wall so that we can try to get through it. First speaker, Sharon Bukarski. Second speaker, Lisa Perry. Third speaker, Teri Young. And Bob Sanchez, you're right after, welcome, three minutes.
Good evening. In your packet, there were two options presented for bike lanes on Owens. Please support Option B2, Protected Bike Lane Off-Street Configuration, which aligns the bike lanes next to the curb. Safety is a major concern with Option B1, which shows a Class II bike lane with only a six-inch line of paint separating bicyclists from fast-moving vehicle traffic. It also requires bicyclists to cross paths with drivers multiple times at entrances and exits of the pickup and drop-off lanes and driveways. Protected bike lanes are much safer because they are separate from car traffic. If you've ever ridden a bicycle down a Class II bike lane, you will see drivers weaving into and out of the bike lane, straddling the lane marker, and even driving down the bike lane. Also, drivers park in Class II bike lanes, which forces bicyclists into traffic. This is a problem everywhere, but especially where there is heavy pickup and drop-off traffic. Just observe traffic around schools. Recognizing the safety concerns with Class II bike lanes, the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan calls for protected bike lanes on multiple, multi-lane streets with speed limits of thirty-five miles an hour or more, such as Owens. Implementation of the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan is also in the Climate Action Plan. A protected bike lane feels much safer and would encourage more people to ride to BART. In a growing city, encouraging micro-mobility not only helps reduce traffic congestion, but also reduces greenhouse gas emissions, which improves air quality. We've seen very successful implementation of protected bike lanes, similar to those shown in Option B2, at Hart and Pleasanton middle schools. A related concern is the exits from the pickup and drop-off lanes, which appear to be very close to the Ironhurst Trail Crossing and the crosswalk at Willow. To stay safe as a bicyclist, I am a keen observer of driver behavior and frequently see drivers looking left toward oncoming traffic and then pulling into the traffic lane before looking right toward a crosswalk. I suggest the pickup and drop-off lanes be shortened to give the more reaction time for drivers. Everyone, not just drivers, deserves safe transportation options. Encouraging bicycling reduces traffic congestion, greenhouse gas emissions, PM 2.5 air pollution from tire wear, especially from heavy EVs, and reduces wear and tear on our roads, which reduces repair costs to the city. It's a win-win for everyone. So please support the Protected Bike Lane option along Owens Drive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Perry, followed by Teri Young, followed by Bob Sanchez, welcome.
Hi, I'm Lisa Perry. I'm here on behalf of the Episcopal Diocese of California, which has recently passed a resolution supporting affordable housing, including transit-oriented development. The hope is that the priority is given to young people and especially younger families. We support the one-to-one parking ratio, which will benefit families and seniors, along with people with disabilities. We would like to encourage short-term parking along the drop-off loop to help support retail uses, as well as drop-off for seniors and disabled persons, and enough parking for moving vans. With a thirteen-hundred-unit building, you're going to have a lot of people coming in and out. So that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Teri Young, followed by Bob Sanchez, followed by TJ McGrath, welcome.
Good evening. The Warriors lost tonight and that really ticks me off. And I like going into San Francisco, I had to catch the Warriors game, the Giants, watch the San Francisco Ballet, and I usually take BART. And I'll be really annoyed if it becomes less convenient to park when I take the BART station. However, let me tell you what really makes me angry. For the holidays, I'm going to have to schlep through the airports to fly to Phoenix to visit my son, my daughter-in-law, and my two grandbabies, hobbling through the traffic, the crowds, the delayed, the delayed flights on my injured knee because my son and daughter-in-law and the family cannot afford to live here. There are many families here in Pleasanton in the same situation. We urgently need more housing and more affordable housing. And if that means I have to handle more convenience at the BART station, so be it. I'm here to speak on the urgency of building more affordable housing and my support of projects like this that increase that opportunity and encourage the council to do whatever it can to accelerate that as much as possible. I'm Teri Young, I'm a thirty-year resident of Pleasanton. I own a home in the Vala Vista area. I'm a parishioner at St. Clair's Episcopal Church. I'm the Chair of Episcopalians of Action and Interfaith, Interfaith Organization. And I represent three faith communities in the Tri-Valley area asking us to do whatever you can, including this project, into consideration. My vision for Pleasanton includes children playing and laughing, adults enjoying the community activities, that gives me more joy than the sound of silence. We believe that a change in the size of, or style of a neighborhood is required to facilitate growth and vitality of our communities. And we welcome increased traffic and noise of children as signs of growth and life. We need to keep our communities vital and attractive to young families. Lack of affordable housing means that children and grandchildren of individuals like me, who have been fortunate enough to accumulate real estate decades ago, can't afford to live here once they are adults and start their own families. I don't want to move to Phoenix. I don't want to end up in a small, expensive house here in Pleasanton. Though we're, if only, I would love, if only I could be near those that I care about the most. So please do what you can to facilitate the building of more affordable housing, including this existing project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Safe travels. Bob Sanchez and TJ McGrath. And those are my last speaker cards. If you'd like to speak on this item, please fill out a blue speaker card. Welcome.
Yes, I'm, first of all, I'd say very much in favor of this kind of project. I believe it's, it'd be good for the community in the whole, in the whole. Do you look at the Santa Ramon, their civic area, it's very vibrant. And I think this could have something similar to it. And I think it's good. Things that I don't know if they are in there or not is, one of the things is having solar or wind turbines, not blades, turbines. They, there's a lot of places, I've been in Minneapolis and other places where in retail, even like Stone Ridge, they have wind turbines around the white, light poles and they provide a fair, a significant amount of energy. In my house, which is in west, off west end of Los Mercedes, I have solar. I have enough solar generated in my house for my household, plus my EV car. I can commute to any area in the Bay Area, San Francisco, San Jose, I've driven it. And I can charge before morning with my 220 charger. So EV, solar energy projects, and there are eighteen nuclear for development projects to have small nuclear plants maybe in the future. But the other thing is, I was a bicycle messenger in San Francisco. I could actually drive from the Ocean Beach to downtown San Francisco quicker on a bike than the people could drive it. I was also a bus user in San Francisco. There was hills, it wasn't flat like here. Here it's easy. The, so, but the one thing is, you need secure, those bikes aren't going to go all the way to San Francisco. You need secure places for them to put those bikes and not put them on the lamppost or someplace like that. So you need to include parking for EVs. I live on the end of West Los Mercedes, the east end. The number of EVs going out of my neighborhood, going towards the Hacienda and other businesses, is exponentially increasing. The other thing is, I think, actually in nineteen sixty-eight in high school, I prayed a proposal that San Francisco, I was a San Francisco resident at the time, that the uni be, could make the totally public-supported uni, everybody gets on and off easy. I would propose that explore during commute hours that local buses were fare-free to encourage people to use them. It would also mean pickup and movement is quicker, so you'd have less buses. The other thing is, I know from a user, I used to go out to the lab from here. If you have to wait an hour for the next bus, people don't use it. It has to be thirty minutes or less, really becomes very viable when you can get, and this isn't directly. directly related, but if you can feed BART with 15-minute intervals from through the community during the commute time in the morning and the afternoon like they do for schools, it'll greatly reduce the traffic that is now pretty bad in the mornings. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. TJ McGrath, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name's TJ McGrath. The closest BART station to where I live is the mall, and if you ever grab a BART car in the morning, you can't get a seat. So what you do is you have to back up the system. You have to go east one station because all of the commuters come in over the hill, Brentwood, Tracy, whatever. So when I look at everything here, since that is the end of the line on Owens that you're talking about, I think, now this is a very futuristic comment, but by the time the construction is done, you will wish that you had saved some space and dedicated it to two trends that are headed this way. One is self-driving cars. You're going to need to make sure you've got enough space committed. My son commutes exclusively on that in Southern California. It's going to hit, it's going to hit big time. The other one that's going to hit, and they're going to be commuting the players to the Olympics by way of a VTOL, Vertical Takeoff and Landing Helicopter. They're four-seat, six-seat placements, electric, don't make any noise. I would like to see the plan include that down the road because by the time that construction's done, you're going to wish you had space dedicated for the VTOLs. The VTOLs now, there's two companies in Northern California that are perfecting them. I've been there. The big one is on the four-door base, and there's another one called Archer Aviation, and they're flying them, and they even have like driverless cars. And they're being perfected in Dubai, and they're getting FAA approval here in the U.S. on every step. So I see commuters coming in from Brentwood, from Stockton, from Tracy. I would just like to see the blueprint before it's finalized because when that project's done, you're going to wish you had committed some space to the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's my last speaker card for item number 11. If you would like to speak on the item number 11 BART plan, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. It's 9:41, we've been at it for a few hours here, so we're going to take a quick five-to-eight minute break for the council, and then we will resume. So right now, we're in recess. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back to the resume. We have resumed our November 18th meeting. It is 9:49 PM and we are still on item number 11. We've had the staff presentation, clarifying questions, public comment, and it's back before us at the council. Same order, same starting position. We have the four questions on here. There's no action. It's direction to staff, informal. So why don't we have each person in light of time go through their four questions and we'll go from there? So Vice Mayor, you're first. The questions are in front of you on the screen there.
Okay. Does the council have any comments regarding the site development scenarios? Let me just go through some comments that I was looking at here. In general, I am in...
Microphone.
Sorry. Let me go to question three first. Generally supportive of the concepts presented tonight? Yes, I am in support of many of the concepts presented tonight. In particular, I look at the staff report, page 111 in the large packet, which lists uses in buildings, comments, and BART use and station access comments that were obtained at the community meeting. I think all of those are very good comments and I would agree and make those same comments myself, especially the place making and destination draw for the community as we were talking about for the retail or dining in the Plaza area. On the next page, 112, conceptual development scenarios, key planning considerations? I mean, all of these listed as key planning considerations are relevant and, you know, to be looked at, so, I mean, I'm not sure. Yeah, there's really no question in my mind that all of these things should be looked at and they're key planning considerations. Yeah, there are no pros and cons for one or the other. I think that they're all self-explanatory. Yeah. For the buildings themselves, the massing, well, the apartment buildings that we're talking about here, whether it's the four parcel scenario or the three parcel scenario, you know, I won't opine on which one I prefer. Frankly, it's, you know, a very similar number of units. The eight-story building has the eastern parcel on the three parcel scenario. I'm not too fond of an eight-story building, but again, that's not my decision to make. As long as all of them are, you know, when we're on the planning commission, as Director Clark well knows, there are many considerations the planning commission takes into account, but one of them particularly is the attractiveness of the buildings themselves. There is one apartment complex out there on Owens that I think is well-known as not being so attractive, and so these will be pretty close across the street from it. Use of articulation, inventive use of massing setbacks, et cetera, to the extent that they that our design standards, our objective design standards will allow. And, yeah, I'm not, you know, those would be some questions maybe to explore for the future. What can be achieved in terms of the physical look and, you know, dimensions and so on of the buildings that may supersede our objective design standards? That would be something I'd want to know, but that's not for right now. Option B2 for the bicycle lane configurations? Yes, I agree that we should have the separation between the bicycle lane and traffic on Owens Obviously, BART, as it says in the staff report, "As the property owner and transit agency will ultimately determine the appropriate amount of replacement parking to serve its riders, balancing consideration for the TOD policies and development objectives for the site." That goes without saying. I think that parking for not only the existing level of ridership for BART, but also the future levels, and I'm sure BART has very sophisticated ways to model those kinds of things, and I'm sure they'll take that into account. Yeah. Non-residential uses, I already referred to the Plaza and some of the community spaces that might be a good thing to have there. One of the things that I was, you know, I was at a program last night that was looking at community cooperation and integration and involvement by various groups within Pleasanton, and we need community spaces. So, you know, perhaps there was one, you know, that's a need that could be filled by a community space in this area. Just a thought. But yes, generally supportive of all the concepts. Comments about, you know, I already offered comments on Q1, Q2, Q3. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Testa?
Okay. Comments regarding site development scenario, building height, maximum units? I strongly would want to limit to five to six stories. Does council have any feedback on any of the other topics? I love the Plaza. I think the courtyards are going to be nice. And council generally supportive of the concept? I think everyone is. I think that there are some key factors, and that would be parking is a real concern. I think the one-to-one on the residential makes sense. That works. I mean, that's going to be tight. They've done a lot of that in Dublin, and I hear from residents that it's dog over there to snag an extra spot or a guest space around some of the housing, but I think it can still work. Any other feedback? Again, I think making sure that we have family space and space for children is important, and that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Iker?
So, in looking at the options that are in the recommendation, I prefer test fit one option, the access loop A2 option, which provides more drop-off space. Option B2 for the off-street configuration for the bike lane, and then option C1 on the site holding capacity. I do have a concern with new legislation that's coming out, which may require up to nine stories on a building, on transit-oriented building, but I would like to cap our, keep our height cap at the 80 feet that we have currently in Hacenda, or 75 feet, 85 feet? But I'd like to keep it at that and try to limit our building height to 75 feet if we can, or seven stories if we can keep it under that. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Gatos?
Regarding site development scenarios, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Iker's articulation. I like the loop circulation. I like the protected bike lanes, you know, although it mixes the bikes and the pedestrians. And then C1 for sites. Regarding the height, I'm willing to be flexible depending on how it comes out. I think the more height, the more parking you can offer. So if that's an issue, you know, I think this is a development that's in a part of the city that's not going to, height's not going to bother a tremendous amount of people over there. It's not next to residents. It's not next to really anything that's going to cause a lot of public outcry. So if we don't allow height there, where would we ever allow it? I think this is like the only place in the city we could do it without, you know, getting a lot of negative feedback, if it provides some tangible benefit to do so or rounds off the parking situation. I support, you know, any non-residential uses on the ground floor Plaza if the market would dictate it. And I think if you put a thousand or more units there and, you know, somebody wants to buy a bottle of water, where do they go? You know, they're going to walk down to Owens Drive to go to the gas station. I don't think that's a great thing, so hopefully we can provide something on there that would work for that. And yes, I mean, generally supportive of the concepts, and I don't have a lot of other feedback, you know, other than agreeing with Councilmember Testa that, you know, we need to make sure we have nice courtyards and amenities for all these new residents, so. And I do, actually, in Mr. McGrath's comments, maybe, you know, planning for the future, this is going to be here for a long time, longer than I'm going to be here. Maybe you want to design it in such a way where, you know, next to the parapet that there's enough structure to support, you know, flying cars, because at some point they're going to come, probably in my lifetime, but it's one of those things that's probably going to be really hard to adjust for if you don't plan for it. So I, you know, if we're building a six or seven or eight-story building, I would suggest that you, you know, put the support in for that now and mindful of the, you know, non-autonomous cars. So those are my suggestions.
Okay. Staff, we're jumping all around, so I'm hoping you're gathering. I'm going to start by actually reading the letter from Mr. Paxton at Hacenda Business Park. Excuse me, just Hacenda. Allowing intensification through, whether through height or density and comprehensive mix of uses that bring vibrancy to the planning area should be the topmost consideration to achieve a workable plan. I couldn't agree more. I think that's exactly the goal. He goes on to state a bit about parking, but a parking management study being conducted surrounding the station that will be a perfect opportunity to look for collective parking needs for the area generally and to develop the right combination of infrastructure and programs to manage parking as a resource for both existing and future development. I couldn't agree more as well with that statement. So those are my kind of overarching. I do have some very specific comments, so I'll go into them. Parking at Site 1 works for me because of the Willow intersection, and that's why I specifically asked about it. I think that the parking structure at a, you know, there's no major intersections in this particular area, but it is the intersection. So I just think that it lends itself to access from different ways, potentially in the future in design. So I'm leaning that. That's test fit one. Like Councilmember Iker said, I like test fit one better. I'm going to say the other reason I like test fit one, which is Site 2 has a ground floor courtyard with an open air that ties into the Plaza on the one side and on Owens on the lower side or the southern side. And I think based upon the initial test fit option, the BART drop-off on Owens would allow people to traverse either up Willow to the bulb, through the courtyard of this building, Site 2, and/or through the Plaza. The other thing is, is by breaking up the Site 2 into two buildings, I think it will help massing considerations overall. I think we could design it better. And if you wanted to have more Plaza utilization into the courtyard of Building 2, Site 2, excuse me, it provides a lot of opportunities for programming that test fit 2 does not. The other challenge I have with test fit 2, right off the bat, is that it's got a childcare facility facing the freeway, surrounded by a parking structure, and I know it might have some internal playground or structure, but I know air quality matters and that type of air quality dumping into the children's care. I know it's just a purple dot on the test plan, but that wouldn't work for me. I'll go a little further, staff. The Plaza, I think the challenge with the Plaza, I mean, I've ridden BART a lot, is that it's very noisy. In fact, frankly, we should see if the freeway noise at the Plaza is louder than the transfer station noise from the prior agenda item. But how do we do night markets or, you know, something like, when I think about activating the Plaza, it's exactly what Councilmember Gato said and exactly what Mr. Paxton said. You know, night markets, farmers' markets, food trucks, bike safety sales with Ava Community Energy, that's a plug, groceries. I think the key is it cannot be a service desert. That's what we have at the mall. So how do we make sure the services are there for these new residents? And I will leave it to someone that knows better. Last, a couple of last bits. I like the wraparound parking. I think it tucks away the parking. It's not, you need to know where the parking is, so wayfinding is important, but I think it actually provides a very good way to expand the parking, as Councilmember Gatos said, active, supportive retail matters. So that's where the question of A1 versus A2 comes in, because I know that I'm saying I like test fit one with the bulb, but I did hear Councilmember Iker with A2 as his preferred option. I think you'll have to decide that, but the concept of being able to safely traverse the Plaza without being distracted by vehicles is my concern. It's a safety concern. The iron horse trail improvements will be welcomed, and I do agree as well with the protected bike lanes B2. Alignment on the southern side with Owens of some of this does seem to be a little off. I know that Bike East Bay has weighed in on that, so I just want to make sure we get it right if we're going to be putting this much money into it. And as Mr. McGrath said, maybe we're not at the flying cars part, but WAMMO, Lyft, and Uber drop-offs, if there isn't sufficient parking ultimately, will matter, right? And we see those cars queuing, so how we handle that, it matters. For me, the proposed heights of 5, 5, 7, 7 on test fit one, I think could work well. I think it could be designed well, look well. I don't have any, I mean, I'm concerned if it was poorly designed, but confidence it could be well-designed. So I think C1 to that matter there. And I, no one really mentioned the affordability percentage. I don't know if Pleasanton's really weighing in on that. Our IZO is at 15%, so I think we would probably see something more akin to the lower end of that range, just because that's what we are used to as our community. And I would let staff maybe hash that out with BART. So that's where we're at.
I'd also support that.
Okay, for the affordability percentage?
Yes. I like the bulb, too.
Okay. So a few more comments coming in. So bulb, which is A2, and you were going to say something, Councilmember Testa?
I was just going to ask for clarification. You would rather have 15% affordable instead of the 20%?
No, it's a 20 to 35, remember? That's the...
Right.
So I'm saying that Pleasanton has a 15% IZO, so I think that we, as a community, are more akin to the lower end on that range, and I would leave for staff to negotiate that process.
Okay. I would definitely want the highest possible amount of affordable...
Target's policy is 35% as presented.
Yeah. So at least 20% and going higher if...
Well, at least 20 is the minimum, so that's not, yeah, so 20 to 35. I'm just weighing in that I'd be on the lower end of the range. Maybe we take a quick poll, Vice Mayor. Where are you on that range?
Yeah, the, from 20 to 35? Yeah. The higher end to meet our affordability requirements under arena. That's where I am.
I would go with 30 if we could get it, sure.
Councilmember Gatos?
I'm open. I mean, I'd leave it to staff to...
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Iker?
I'm open to leaving it to staff, but I'd like to see the lower end.
Okay. So there we go, some general direction. Staff, I'm going to ask you, do we have everything we need directionally on this informational item? Schwed is saying yes, but I don't know if anyone else is. She can watch the tape.
Looking at Rick. Looking at Rick. Yes, all good.
Thumbs up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'll just conclude with thank you, BART. We had the presentation earlier by Board Member Hernandez, and now we have you here. So really appreciate your engagement with Pleasanton and high-quality design, so thank you very much. This concludes item number 11, so thank you very much. We are going to do a switcheroo on you, staff. We're going to go ahead and let the Gulf Gas Station come ahead, if you don't mind. So we're going to take and dispense with Gulf Gas Station previously item number four. We're going to do that first, and then we'll go to the budget next, so. Sorry, I should have maybe told you...
Yeah, we didn't, we have to get our planner here.
Oh, okay.
So just give me, you just give us a moment. Thank you.
Sorry, Susan. I'm just, I project 12 will be...
He's in the building. I saw him at the break, so.
Trying to take advantage of the time to get some work done at his office.
I'm sorry. I should have, I could have done better to let you know. Yes, please. We're going to, we're going to go that way. We'll get ourselves organized then in the meantime. Soon as I see the whites of his eyes, I'll read it in. We are now taking on item 12, we'll call it 11B maybe, which is previously known as item four. Review modifications of the, to the installation monument sign and proposed canopy and adopt a resolution upholding the zoning administrator's approval of a signed design review application, P240731, to install a new monument, wall, canopy, and pump signage as part of a gas station rebrand for Gulf Gas Station located at 4212 First Street with modifications to the previously approved monument sign. Mr. Lukini, sorry about that. I could agree on you a little bit heads up, but thank you.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. So staff does not have a formal presentation prepared tonight. We are prepared to do our best to answer any questions from the council this evening, and I do have photos available for reference that were also included in the agenda report if you'd like to have those presented as well or available for you tonight.
Okay. The applicant has submitted a speaker card, so we'll kind of follow standard protocol with that. That will be our presentation. We'll go to clarifying questions first, and then we'll have the applicant come up. So Councilmember Testa, you pulled the item. You have clarifying questions of staff?
I do, thank you. So my first question is, there was a timeline confusion, and the work was done before council had the opportunity to weigh in or approve. So does staff have the authority without council approval to approve this project?
Initially, yes, but council did have the option to call the item up, which is the reason we're here this evening.
Okay, so staff's is a recommendation to council, isn't it?
No, that's incorrect. This zoning administrator has the ability to approve signed design review per our municipal code.
All right, well, thanks for that clarification. So, but the work was done before council, and it was being called up, so. So did the applicant sign in a hold harmless? Could you explain what that is and how that? It was a hold harmless agreement that expressly states they will be financially responsible to correct work done without council approval. Is that correct?
Yeah. Councilmember Testa, if you're referring to the waiver to apply for plan check, for building permit plan check during the appeal period, then yes, the applicant did sign and provide that. Otherwise, there was no other hold harmless agreement that I'm aware of.
But then it's a waiver, and I remember reading it, and it did very specifically say that they, if they did any work prior to council approval, that they would have the full financial responsibility to correct it. Isn't that right?
That part is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for questions.
Okay. It's, I had designated this reverse order, so Vice Mayor, any clarifying questions of staff?
Yes, just one. I recall in our previous consideration of this item several months ago, that the council approved the modifications to the extent of the new monument, the wall and the pump signage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the only thing left with now is the canopy?
As well as having your take on whether or not the modifications made of the monument sign were also, if you were supportive of that as well.
Okay. I thought that the changes to the monument sign had been made much earlier.
They added, I believe Councilmember Gatos had made a comment at that hearing wanting to kind of reserve the right to potentially make additional changes once the sign was installed, and now it's installed, and so part of the action tonight would also be to reaffirm, I think, that approval and/or if there's any additional changes you're looking for.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Councilmember Gatos, any clarifying questions of staff?
I do not.
Councilmember Iker?
I don't.
I do not either. Okay, we have a speaker card. If you'd like to speak on this item, please fill out blue speaker card and come forward. Applicant, you are afforded, I think, 10 minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you very much for having us here this evening after we have gone through the process of making improvements. Originally, we were having a very monument that was very, very orange. The face, we changed the face to a white face. We also made some modifications to the size of the sign, working within the monument, the existing brick monument. So thank you to Eric, and thank you for staff for working with us over the last several months on this. Reason why I put in a speaker card, I wanted to see if I can make a friendly amendment to all of this, is there was a comment at the last meeting talking about how that corner can be a little bit dark late at night, and so an idea that the ownership has is to install some uplighting, very simple uplighting on the palm tree on the corner, and so I throw that out for your consideration that I think would make it more attractive and provide some of that lighting that maybe that corner doesn't have right now. So I'm very happy with staff recommendation, and then just wanted to put that friendly idea out there for your consideration, and if we can get that settled this evening as well, that would make everything that much better. So thank you very much, and we look forward to your support.
I, excuse me, Mr. Houston, I guess I must ask, what color light would you be asking to put upwards?
White.
Okay, I just want to clarify in light of everything.
It will not be orange, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, that, anyone else would like to speak on item 11B, formerly known as item four? Please step forward to the podium at this time. Seeing none, public comment is hereby closed. We're bringing it back to council. What would we like to do?
Okay. Comments?
Comments or motion? We're at that point.
Okay, I'll go.
Our communities long-held high expectations and responsibility for responsible development and adherence to our Pleasanton's general plan. It's what has kept Pleasanton special. The recent Gulf Station is inconsistent with the requirements and standards set forth in our general plan. According to our signed design guidance, canopy design should be compatible with the large, with the scale, color palette, and context. The current design does not meet that standard. The bright franchise-style colors and branding, canopy, and pump signs predominantly display corporate colors. Our general plan and sign design guideline explicitly discourage bright franchise elements and prototype architecture. In fact, the, it is encouraged high quality and visual compatibility with the Pleasanton's character, and this one does not do that. It was installed before the final permits. The signage was installed before the requirement, required permits were issued, installing before the city council's review. As your city council, our responsibility is to uphold policies and values that protect the quality, character, and safety of Pleasanton. That means we must not compromise when it comes to compliance with our general plan or allow exceptions that erode the standard our residents rely on. Maintaining the integrity of our planning process is essential for preserving the community we all care about. Every project must meet the expectations that Pleasanton has clearly established. I would make the motion that we do not uphold the zoning administrator approval of this project. I think that the, I appreciate the modifications on the sign design, and I support that. My motion would be that the canopy is overbranded and needs to be reconsidered.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion made.
Question? The, the... The... Question? The, the extent of the motion to the canopy, do I understand that correctly?
What I think needs further modification is the canopy, yes.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion before we take a vote on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call vote, please.
Council member Tessa?
Yes.
Nybert?
Aye.
Iker?
No.
Gatos?
No.
Mayor Balch?
No. Motion fails. Motion fails 3-2. All right. Other motion and consideration of the applicant's request for an uplight? Can I just maybe ask point clarification of staff? What is the standard process for a request for a electrical uplight?
That is something that we would refer straight to our building department for permits, and the planning division would verify that it meets the lighting, the general lighting standards that we adhere to through the plan check process.
Okay. I'd be akin to letting that follow the standard process, frankly.
Yeah, I can, I can just signal my support for the uplights and, you know, I'll just say, just to explain why I'm coming down the way I, I am, is that I, you know, I, at the end of the day, I'm an equities kind of person, and I think that the applicant worked with staff who gave feedback on their plans, approved their plans, signaled, approved for their plans for a standard that we all have to agree is subjective within our plan. And, you know, if we wanted the council to be more specific about what kind of signs we want and provide more guidance to the staff and to applicants to enforce some sort of objective standards, we can do that. But at this point, I'm not willing to essentially make them tear down what they've built that the city indicated they'd approve based on a subjective, you know, a subjective interpretation, as we all do to what the general plan is. So that's the reason, and I would, I don't know what motion we need to make, but I would make the motion to...
Approve staff's recommendation.
Yeah, approve staff's recommendation with the addition of approving, signaling approval from the council to uplight the palm tree with white light.
I'll second that.
Just a point of clarification, staff, with related to the uplight. That would still follow standard building process, correct? We're just...
A permit would still be necessary for that light as part of this application.
Okay, so we're not usurping the standard process. Okay, thank you. Okay, motion made and seconded. Do we have any conversation or discussion before we proceed? Seeing none, we'll call vote, please.
Council members Gatos?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Nybert?
No.
Tessa?
No.
Mayor Balch?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2.
Okay, that completes item 11B, previously known as item four, and we are now proceeding to our previously scheduled item 12. Sorry about jumping around, trying to just work through the agenda. Appreciate everyone's patience with me. So if I can ask staff, do we want to do 12A and B as one, or do you want to do?
We're, we're prepared to present it as one item.
Okay, why don't we do that if we can in light of the time? Just to my fellow council members, it's approximately approaching 10:30. Just an agenda check that we want to, I presume, and I'm just asking, complete item 12A and B, correct?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we have unanimous to go with that, so we'll keep going.
Thank you. I'm going to just get us started with a little bit of framing on this item this evening. I just want to start by thanking our finance director, Susan Shea, and her team for the work that they've done developing the financial forecast for the city. It is a relatively new tool for us, and the forecast has been very effective in, in this last year of budgeting and relative to the actuals. Fiscal year 24, 25, year-end close information shows that we were within about 5% on the revenue side, 5% of our, of our financial forecast projection, and we were within about a half a percent on the expense side. So we're going to get into the specifics of that this evening, but before I turn the presentation over, I'm just going to touch on a handful of topics. First, I just want to reiterate that the purpose of tonight's meeting is really to compare the budgeted numbers to the actual spending. We're going to take another look at our available resources and our priorities when we get into February, when we have our mid-year budget check-in, as well as the updated financial forecast for the city council. And then we'll have another opportunity in May when we're halfway through our two-year budget cycle, and that process is commonly known as the midterm check-in with the council. The second item I want to touch on is just relative to the overall outcome of our, our year-end close. There's going to be people who are in the community wondering why we have a surplus, and it's really important to recognize that we, we budget conservatively, and we do it on purpose, so that we don't have to draw on reserves at the end of the fiscal year. We also want to proactively ensure that we have cash flow throughout the year. The third point before we jump into the, the meat of the topic tonight is that our, our budget does not rely on one-time funds like fees from our development services. That is part of the, the reason that we have some, some surplus at the end of this fiscal year. And when we put together our baseline budget, the dollars that we include are relative to one-time money are typically scaled down and relatively conservative because those dollars are less predictable. They tend to fluctuate from year to year. And just by way of example, in this, this particular fiscal year, well over a million dollars of the surplus that we're going to talk about tonight came from development service fees that came in during the last month of the fiscal year, meaning that had the permit or the timing for the payment of the fees, then just a couple of weeks later, we might not even be talking about it tonight relative to fiscal year 24, 25. Another point I'd like to make, just in, again, I know it's late, but I think this is a topic that's really important. When we put together our, our, our balanced budget, we're not including all of the city's needs when we put this, this together. You'll see tonight from the report, funds like our workers' comp fund, stormwater, and there are a couple, there are some with negative fund balance, some that are just underfunded. We also have, we also have capital and facility needs that go well beyond anything that we can cover with our current city's revenues, which takes me to the, the last point that I'm going to make before I turn it over to Susan and Adam. The, the council adopted a reserve policy that talks about how we deal with surpluses when we're able to, once we've topped up our, our reserve, what do we do with anything that is extra? And we can talk about the details of that policy and how it relates to what we're doing this evening, but essentially, we're taking that city policy and we're putting these dollars back into underfunded needs in the city at this time. Adam Nelkey's here this evening with Susan Shea, our city, our city engineer. Adam Nelkey is here. He'll run through the CIP work, and we'll, we'll talk, we, I'll save my comments on that for, for Q and A if it comes up. I think I'll just be a little more efficient. So I'll hand it over to Director Shea, and we'll get into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, staff will present the financial results for fiscal year 2025. Please note that these are un-audited Before I present the financial performance, I want to talk about the guiding principles that the city used for budgeting and financial management. Our financial policies and fiscal practices are focused on utilizing conservative budgeting practices to prevent unexpected financial shortfalls. It's important for the city to have sufficient revenues and cash inflows to support services and programs delivered to the community. When we have one-time resources, we use the one-time money to strengthen our reserves, our fund, one-time projects such as capital projects, pay down on funded pension and retire medical liabilities, and events, council and community priority projects. This established sheet of financial policies and best practices help us build our financial resiliency for long-term sustainability. Next, I will summarize the financial results for the general fund and other key operating funds. General fund revenues and expenditures are in line with budget as Jerry mentioned earlier. Due to a cooler real estate market in 2025, property tax is lower than budgeted, but offset by increases in sales tax and business license tax. Due to large development projects and increased development activities, we generated some one-time revenues from development projects. As noted in the staff report, 12.8 million in revenues and expenditures have been recorded associated with the Costco project. Revenues represent proceeds we received from Costco for the transportation improvement work in the Junction Drive area. Basically, Costco has been fronting the money for that project. Expenditures represent the capital outlay or costs we incur in the Junction Drive area. 12.8 million in long-term loans payable has also been recorded, and a portion of the sales tax generated from Costco will be used to pay off the loan over time. Due to weight compositions, we achieved staffing savings, but the savings were reduced by the implementation of a new accounting standard pertaining to compensator upsets such as sick leave. With one-time revenues and savings, the general fund has sufficient revenue to cover the contribution to the capital improvement program without using funds from the capital reserve. For enterprise funds, the water fund reserve level improved as a result of the rate increase approved by the council in 2023. The sewer fund reserve meets the 35% reserve target. The storm drain fund and the cemetery fund continue to receive subsidies from the general fund. We have funding gaps in, in some areas, as Jerry mentioned earlier. I just want to present a few of the key areas here, including the stormwater system, the repair and replacement program associated, associated with infrastructure, equipment, and vehicle replacement, and the workers' compensation program. General fund revenues are higher than budget by about 5%, really about 4.6% when you exclude the Costco transaction. When you further exclude the one-time large development projects, it's higher than budget by only 2.4%. Due to high mortgage rates in 2025, property tax came in lower than budget by about 1.3 million. Due to new license and greater gross receipts, business license tax is higher than budget by about 500, 900,000, sorry. For example, the relocation of Kaiser workers from Oakland to Pleasanton, and the opening of a new Costco store contributed to the positive variance. Due to large development projects such as the Everon Bay residential project, development services fees are about 3.4 million higher than budget. I want to emphasize that these revenues are one-time revenues. One-time revenues are for one-time expenditures. One-time money should not be used for ongoing expenses such as support for police, fire, and library services. And this type of transaction is not unique to Pleasanton. Other cities also had larger development projects from time to time. As Jerry mentioned earlier, we received more than 1 million in revenue in the last month of June from some of the larger projects. For the other revenues category, the budget variance is mainly related to 12.8 million in Costco capital contribution. General fund expenditures are about 0.5% below budget excluding the one-time Costco transaction. Certain positions will help weaken during the year to achieve savings and plan for the cost reduction for the current two-year budget cycle in order to reduce the, or minimize the impact on employees. As shown on the table here, personnel costs total about 109 million, including about 23 million in pension costs. With the weakened positions, we had some savings, but reduced by the implementation of SCASB 101, resulting in a net saving of 1.1 million. For other expenditures, the budget variance is mainly related to the 12.8 million in Costco capital outlay. Savings from transportation and training, repairs, and maintenance, materials, supplies, and services amount to about 800,000. When the council adopted the 2025 budget, the transactions related to Costco were not included in the budget. Staff proposed to amend the general fund budget to include those transactions. There are also several transactions presented here that we would like to include in the budget. Since they are detailed in the staff report, I won't repeat them here. The general fund reserve totaled about 31 million at the end of the fiscal year. I'm referring to the unrestricted reserve portion. It meets the 20% reserve target. The 2023 water rate increase helped the water fund to improve its financial results. The fund ended the year with about 3.9 million in net income. The reserve level also improved from 21% in 2024 to 29%. All of the reserve level remains below the 35% reserve target. The sewer fund also ended the year with a net income for about 700,000. The reserve level is above the 35% reserve target. Please note that the excess funds have been utilized for capital projects in the current two-year budget cycle. The storm drain fund and the cemetery fund end the year with positive financial results, mainly due to the contributions from the general fund. The repair and replacement funds represent a consolidation of over 10 funds such as the facility renovation fund, park renovation fund, vehicle replacement fund, and equipment replacement fund. The fund balance totaled about 24 million. We don't have sufficient funds to replace and repair aging equipment, vehicles, and infrastructure. The asset management plan that's underway will help us to identify the magnitude of our defer maintenance obligation. The workers' compensation funds have a negative fund balance totaling over 3 million, meaning we have not set aside enough money for claims liabilities. The staff report includes a number of proposed budget adjustments for other funds as well due to changes to program activities. These amendments are necessary so that we don't report deficit spending in the annual comprehensive financial report. Since these adjustments are detailed in the staff report, I won't repeat them here. Once all that has been completed, we will present the financial results to the city council. After the annual comprehensive financial report presentation, we'll present a media budget update and the updated financial forecast to the council in February. In the next several months, the city will conduct an organizational assessment authorized by the city council to identify operational efficiency. Staff recommends that the city council assess the fiscal year 2025 year-end operating budget report, approve budget amendments in multiple funds, and designate the general fund balance. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. I would go ahead and just have Adam complete out CIP if everyone's okay with that, and then we'll do it all at once. Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Mayor Balch, council and the public, and thank you for having me tonight. The CIP carryforward process moves the remaining budget and existing CIP projects from last fiscal year to the current fiscal year. It's implementing the recommendations for, for existing projects that was outlined in the approved five-year CIP program, which reprogrammed the return funds to new projects. The status of projects presented tonight are based on the status of June 30th, and the majority of the projects have advanced. Large CIP projects can take multiple years to complete, and even the smaller projects can take two fiscal years. This is greatly attributed to the city's fiscal year ending in June during the middle of the major construction season. Last fiscal year, the city completed the design of 26 projects, had 13 projects under construction, and closed out six projects. A total of $33.7 million was expended. This year, $63.8 million are recommended to be carried forward, of which $60 million was in active projects both in design and construction. Only 3.6 million were not actively advancing as projects were placed on hold, reserved, or scheduled to start in the next fiscal year as of June 30th. It's important to note that 52.6 million of the carryforward balance is comprised of restricted funding. Restricted funds have limitations on what they can be expended on, and typically include impact fees paid by developers, enterprise funding like water and sewer, and transportation funds like Measure BB and gas tax and grant funds. There's a total of 11.2 million in non-restricted general fund projects that is being applied toward life and safety projects like the Valley Avenue sound wall, the fire alarm control panel upgrades, and Sycamore Imperial Court storm drain improvements. the fire alarm control panel upgrades, and Sycamore Imperial Court storm drain improvements. Last fiscal year budget was a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, which included all of the existing projects, new fiscal year twenty-four budgeted projects, and reserve projects. Of that, ninety-one million was expended under design or in construction contracts. Eighteen million of reserve projects were already carried forward during the fiscal year twenty-six budget adoption. The reserve projects are comprised of restricted funds and typically are partially funded projects related to developer funds waiting for future contributions from other adjoining developments. The eleven point six million in reductions is associated with implementing the CIP project prioritization process, which outline removing partially funded projects from the CIP. In addition, water and sewer projects were reprogrammed based on the newly approved twenty-year CIPs as outlined in the master plans. The eleven point six in reductions was fully reprogrammed in under the approved five-year CIP program, ensuring a timely use of the funds. Last year set a new record for CIP expenditures totaling thirty-three point seven million dollars. This included key projects like the near-term water improvements pipelines, the new library lighting, reconstruction of Hop Yard and Dorman Road, our annual streets program, Lions Wayside Park, and many more projects, with over thirteen projects that were under construction and six that we completed and closed out with council. Over sixty-one million dollars of carryforward budget is in active projects that include funding for the West Los Vasitas reconstruction that's nearing a hundred percent in design, funding for FEMA and storm drain improvements that's working through permit approval processes, life and safety projects like we discussed for Valley Avenue Sound Wall and the fire alarm upgrades for the OSC Library and Police Department, which are already under contract. This includes funds for the city groundwater supply project and completion of the booster station for the near-term improvement projects. In addition to the construction projects, the CIP team has been hard, working hard on planning for our future. This includes work on the sanitary sewer management plan, our asset management plan, our urban forest master plan, and supportive of water and sewer rate studies. The stormwater master plan, ADA transition plan, and facility master plan are currently kicking off. In addition, the city will bring in on a utility program management firm to ensure that we have adequate resources and staffing to deliver the sewer and water programs as their budgets are greatly increasing. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to accept the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five year-end financial and program delivery report for the capital improvement program and approve the carryforward as included in the report.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So to my council members, Councilmember Iker, you're at the start. I'm a little out of order, so we'll just go down the row after that. So, Councilmember Iker.
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, Councilmember Testa?
I've had an opportunity to get my questions answered, but I'll just ask for...
Mike.
Yeah, okay, I'm already, yeah. My question's answered, but could we get an explanation about what happened with the Johnson Drive project and why it was, came in well over budget and the consequences of that?
Yeah, so, not associated with tonight. So tonight is just about the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe, that fiscal year. We will have a separate memo coming to the council regarding the overall costs of Johnson Drive and all of the public improvements that go with the economic development zone. The costs went up significantly while the project was delayed and then ultimately under construction. And then there was sort of a flurry to the finish to get the Costco store open. And so our city engineer and other folks on our city staff are working to finalize the costs. What you're, and there will be a memo, what I can tell you in just a really high level is that the costs were significantly more than they were originally expected to be when the project was approved nearly a decade ago. And the payback period regarding the sixty, forty tax sharing split means that we'll be paying back for a significantly longer time because the costs went up. So that's the nutshell. Regarding tonight, I think that unfortunately, the way that we have to report the Costco, the loan essentially, the sales, the loan that's being paid back with sales tax, as well as the improvements that come onto our books, means that the Costco money, while it shows up as twelve point eight million dollars, it's a wash. It shows up on the revenue side, and it shows up on the expenditure side, and it's an accounting necessity. But it really doesn't change our financial position as a city because we're using the sales tax dollars to pay that back over time.
Right, okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Only a few questions. I had more than fifteen questions that I had a chance to get answers to in my conversations yesterday with the city manager and finance director Shea. So I appreciate that. I will ask them again. Just wanted to ask, did I hear you right when you said that compared to the forecast, the revenues came in under five percent variance from the forecast and under one percent for expenses?
The revenues came in higher by about four point six percent, including the one-time money. And the expenses came in about half a percent lower than what was projected.
Okay, still, that's, yeah, a pretty decent variance, and in fact, it's phenomenal forecasting, I think.
Yeah, I would agree, and I'll attribute that to the team that put together the forecast and built the assumptions. It was really, really good work.
Okay, yeah, congratulations on that. So just a couple of things. I know the answers to these, but I just wanted to remind folks. What fiscal year are we talking about here? When did it end?
June thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and are these unaudited results?
Yes.
Okay, so what, knowing they're unaudited, what caveats or cautions would you offer?
In case there are adjustments recommended by the auditors, we will present those changes to the council when we present the annual comprehensive financial report.
Okay.
Yeah, in January, yeah.
In January, okay, great. And then, this is mid-November right now that you're presenting these to us. Do these get presented to the council every year around this time?
Yes.
Okay, so mid-November is a routine timing.
Yeah, usually November is the month that we present the year financial results to the council.
And as I recall, that's been happening for years, right?
Yeah, I think except for one of the years we did it in December, so it's around this timeframe.
Okay, completely normal timing. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Gatos?
I don't have any questions that haven't been answered. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I'll ask my question. So staff, obviously, you put out a supplemental memo, seven point two million dollar surplus before the transfers, which we know we need to do for workers' comp and all of those other things, so. My question is this, why was the recommendation to put three point oh eight back into the capital reserve fund, formerly known as the rainy day fund, and we rechanged it? Why is that the versus any potential other options? And I'm actually specifically asking for the one fifteen in the budget.
Right. So this is the biggest transfer into the general fund. At the time the council adopted the budget, the intent was to use to cover capital contribution. Now with one-time development revenues and, you know, savings, we have sufficient revenues in the general fund to cover the capital contribution. The goal here is not to use up all our savings, so the council has the flexibility to redeploy the funds as part of the upcoming, you know, mid-year budget development or the midterm budget development in May two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, so we could put it there into this capital reserve fund, the name of it right now. We could change the name, correct, if it's more akin to what the funds are for?
Yeah, and also the asset management plan is underway, and we expect to see a report from the consultant and Adam's team sometime in December. There will be critical projects that we need to utilize funding for some of those projects as well.
Okay, the second is the transfer out of the unallocated general fund reserve. So based upon the staff recommendation, transferring two point four out to Streets will leave us within our policy of twenty point one percent for twenty-six. We do a two-year budget. Do you offhand know what that does for twenty-seven? Are we going to be approximately still about twenty percent? I know it's a little further out, but...
Yeah, it is the expectation at this point, and that's why we need to revisit as part of the mid-year budget update in February with more current financial projections. And then, at the same time, we'll present the project fund balance as well.
Okay, and then my other question is, as the city manager outlined, a lot of this money came in, obviously, right at the tail end of the fiscal year, right, basically the last month. Does that leave a divot or a hole in the two-year budget forecast that we should be thinking about? Or do we think that it will be backfilled by other development dollars? You know, so we budgeted some very conservative estimate for development, right, at some point in our two-year budget. Given the sizable payment that we're now seeing above budget, did that pull that in from the current year we're in and cause a reduction that we're expecting? Or do we think it will refill?
It's hard to predict at this point. That's why we need to a media budget update. But I do want to assure the council that when we put the budget together, we don't just count on large development projects. As recommended in the IBALE report, we're not supposed to include large development projects in the projection unless we know the revenues will come through. So basically, our budget includes what we call a baseline revenue we expect from development projects. But you never know what's going to happen with the economy. The activities can change as well. So we need to reevaluate during mid-year.
Okay, and the mid-year presentation at the council is approximately, when do you believe that will come to us?
February two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any additional questions? And I wanted to just make sure my fellow council members received the supplemental as well.
I do. Based on that, a big chunk of the money coming in from the development money was from Avalon Bay, right?
One of the larger projects.
That was, what, over a million dollars or?
Uh, it depends on how many fees you're looking at.
Right.
They did bring in a lot of fees, and they also brought in fees, you know, in the impact fees category, the general fund categories, right, and those were pretty significant fees.
At what point, I'm just curious, like generally speaking, at what point in the development process do you, based on the ID Bailey report, go from, we're not going to conclude this in our projection, to we are going to include this in our projection?
For some.
Because for Avalon Bay, if that wasn't in the projections that we got, they were already, you know, the shovels were beyond in the ground at that point, right? Like, once they start building it, at what point do you shift from, we're not going to include this in the in the projection to we are as far as development money is concerned?
So if you have enough information about the project, you know, that's going to be complete, right, within the fiscal year, and you are collecting the fees, right, you know you are collecting the fees, those can be included in the forecast. For example, with the Costco project, we were pretty confident that it was going to come through. That's why we include it in the forecast and the budget. And another thing, what, you know, we do sometimes is that if we have some uncertainties about new revenues, what cities do is that they budget the revenue for that first year as one-time revenues to fund one-time expenditures. So in case revenue does not come through, you just don't move forward with those projects.
Understood. Okay, yeah, I get why. I mean, for Avalon Bay, I realize it came in right at the end of the fiscal year. But when Costco's scheduled to finish in November, you feel confident that it's going to happen within that fiscal year because it's November, not May, right?
Right, and we have more information at the time about the progress of the project too.
Sure.
And then we were conservative in the budget as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any additional further follow-up questions before we go to the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up to public comment. We have no speaker cards. If you'd like to speak on item twelve A or B, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, just in case, it's a little late. All right, we'll close public comment, bring you back to the council. Staff is recommending the transfers as outlined. We're going to go in the same order, so Councilmember Iker.
Thank you for your work on this. It was a little convoluted to get through, but we talked about, you know, maybe finding some ways to make it a little bit clearer on future iterations of this work. But thank you for that. With that, I don't have any issues with any of the recommendations staff is making, and I would support staff's recommendation at this time. So I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, Councilmember Iker, or Testa, excuse me?
Um, I have, I have no questions. I will second the motion.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Just clarifying, the motion applies both twelve A and twelve B. Is that appropriate?
Yes, approve twelve A and twelve B.
Okay, I support that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gatos? I'm going to throw a wrench into this in about a minute, by the way.
Sure, I will. Tell me your wrench before.
So I have comments, but my wrench would be that I'm going to remind my colleagues that we are taking three million dollars out of the one fifteen trust. So again, this is one-time surplus that we've gotten from developer impact fees, just to be very clear, one-time money. But also, our one fifteen trust is one-time money. In the twenty-five through twenty-seven budget, we have budgeted three million dollars, one million in year one, two million in year two, to be withdrawn from the one fifteen trust. Every day, we're allowed to keep that money in that fund. It's about able to compound, grow interest, and help us to stave off our pension obligations. So my recommendation is that we think about, instead of transferring the three million dollars fully back to capital, that we consider allocating some to reduce the draw on the one fifteen so we can handle our pension problem or challenge. That being said, I'd be comfortable maybe moving it to a different reserve account, call it not capital reserve account, and then let staff come back at the mid-year update, because when do we draw from the one fifteen? When's the first draw?
We are planning to withdraw the money after the mid-year budget update. We do want, yeah, we do want to take a look at the updated financial projection to evaluate options and strategies to balance the budget. So we were not planning to withdraw the funds before the mid-year update.
So I would, I'd put it into a different account and let them then tell us if we could reduce the draw on the one fifteen. So that's my wrench. So, sure. Councilmember Gatos?
Yeah, I mean, I'm supportive of the motion with that. I'm suggesting, it sounds like you're not going to draw the one fifteen trust until after we get the budget updated in February. I mean, it seems to me, and, you know, I think I made the analogy of, you know, drinking a milkshake out of two straws from the same bowl. I mean, where we put the money and what we call it is only so relevant. And if, you know, if I have a checking account, a savings account, and another account, I'm going to put the money that I'm going to sit on for a little while in the one that bears the most interest. And if we're just calling it, you know, capital improvement or capital reserve, I realize that earmarks the money for certain projects and is in line with, you know, good accounting practices. But, yeah, I think the point's well taken that if it can be put out and then withdrawn in the future, if we want to, into an account that bears more interest, why would you not do that? I guess that's a question of, what was the reason, what would the counterargument be to what the mayor is suggesting?
It will be up to the council, and, you know, there are, we use different options and strategies to balance the budget when we come back to the council in February. That will be the time, you know, the council can direct staff as to how you want to balance the budget, where you want to pull the money from. And there will be also the asset management plan conversation. You know, the council can utilize funds from the general fund to support priority projects or use, you know, funds from the capital reserve to support projects.
Okay.
So maybe my friendly amendment request is that we simply rename the capital reserve account to something else so that it's not preordained to be capital, that it could help us offset the one fifteen. And I don't know if staff thinks that's even, if that's just window dressing, I don't need to do it. I just...
If there's consensus from the council tonight to, I guess what I'll start with saying is, the capital reserve fund, there would be no repurposing that fund without a subsequent council discussion. So if there's direction tonight to put that money into an account, call it capital reserve, call it something else, and then have the conversation more, with more information in February, we can take that direction from the council tonight. There's no, there's no intent to take capital reserve dollars and put them to projects without council authorization in the meantime.
Okay, I want to try to get us done, so I'll try to be brief. My intent is exactly that concern, right? My intent is that we have three point oh eight million dollars that is one-time money that has been from one-time payments from a developer, right, to our community. And at the same time, that's our left hand, and our right hand is about to draw three million dollars from our one fifteen trust. And I think we need to give staff time and direction that, hey, we may want to earmark this, I don't know where my colleagues are at, to... to stave off the draw, right? That's so that it can continue to stay in interest-bearing in the 115 to help us with the larger pension challenge. That's what I'm trying to.
I understand.
Okay.
So clearly understood, and I think as long as the council is understanding that concept and is agreeable to that concept, then we can put it into a separate account, hold it till we get to February, and then make those budget modifications.
Okay, so that would be my friendly.
Can I just clarify? So the money is already in a separate fund, so if the council.
The 3.08?
It's already in the rainy day reserve, capital reserve. So it won't go anywhere until the council gives further direction. If the council wishes to rename the fund, we can definitely do that.
Well, I have a question. So for the council to make a decision to move the money from that fund, is it necessary to rename it or reallocate what that fund is? Or can we just authorize you to move that money for the, to cover the purse coverage?
Could I, could I maybe, pause this, could I just maybe, instead of trying to go through this masonry, maybe we, we have a motion and a second. Maybe we, if I could just ask a friendly amendment, that we designate or direct staff to evaluate use of these funds would be pension obligation and and other things that are for the current budget we're in. You know what I'm trying to say?
I support that.
Would staff, does that work for staff?
Could you just repeat it one more time for us, just so that it were clear?
Staff's recommendation, as presented already, which we have a motion and a second on, with direction to staff that we don't use the money for per se capital. We could, but we evaluate staving off the 115 draw in the future. And any potential other suggestions staff would have about how to use this one-time money to help our city?
We will do that, and it can stay exactly where, the money can stay where it is. If that's the intent of the council, we can, we'll park it where it's parked. We'll bring you back options, you'll have updated financial forecast, hopefully more information on the asset management plan and how the pension trust is doing, and we'll do all that in February.
And when are we evaluating the pension, we have the pension.
Strategy.
Strategy, when is that coming to us?
So we are expecting to bring that strategy to the council sometime in March. But we do plan to provide the council, you know, an update before that. And we'll outline some of the options and strategies that other agencies utilize out there and what are the best practices.
Okay, so maybe I'll just, chair's prerogative here. My intent to my colleagues is simply that the pension strategy, we have a small windfall of 3 million dollars we're about to put into, per staff's recommendation, the rainy day fund, now known as the capital reserve fund. All I'm trying to denote is my personal goal to see if it could be used to help us with the pension challenge, right? We don't have to make that decision to do that yet, but just, maybe I'm trying to earmark the funds for potentially that.
Create the option to have that decision made later.
Do the work.
Ultimately, if you decide you wanna see the full pension strategy, we could come back in May, and we could still, we could hold on.
The draw?
The draw, because we're still in this fiscal year.
So that's where I'm heading.
I'd support that.
I think that's a, would be a sound practice for us to do that.
Okay, Councilmember Testa, you did made the second, you agreed to the friendly amendment?
I would very much like if we have the ability to put that money back, or not put it back, but prevent it from being drawn. I would like that as well.
Okay, and Councilmember, any comments on that before?
No comments, when it stays longer into the 115 trust drawing interest, that's great.
Okay. I think everyone made their comments. I just had a few other minor ones, if I may, and I'll try to wrap up quickly, right? I talked to staff, just like all of us did, I appreciate the conversation about the ID Bailey recommendations. I know transparency is everyone's goal here, I know staff's thinking about how to do that as we go through the budget process, so I will really compliment the supplemental memo, I found it extremely helpful. So thank you very much for providing this to us as well, and that was very, very helpful. For our community, I'm gonna acknowledge that this cuts both ways. And what I mean by that is I remember many years ago, we bet on sales tax from Costco coming in before Costco had a shovel in the ground, as I pointed out at that budget iteration. And we had to adjust revenue downwards because Costco's sales tax did not start where we had initially projected in the budget. It just so happens that this activity occurred in the very last month of the fiscal year and came in in June. So let's not squander it, of course, and I appreciate the prudence by fellow council members. I want to also point out, property tax did not achieve 3%. It did not achieve 3%, but other sources of income did do better. And that's generally how I see budgets. Sometimes one is up and something's down, and it's a convolation, combination of a few things that drive it. So I appreciate my fellow colleagues' conversation about the pension obligation, because I think if we could reduce the draw, we're showing our employees our real dedication to solving the pension obligation problem. It's always gonna be, at least in my view, a challenge between operations, capital needs, and pension. And we're balancing that out as transparently and forthright with our community. I personally would even think about that 3 million dollars micro projects, and I talked to the city manager about this. What if we cut a half million dollars off to finish the lighting in downtown with cafe lights? Or speakers in Lion's Way Side Park, which our community wanted? Or the software upgrades to the permitting department so that we can improve customer service? Or we know we're gonna have to have non-functional turf conversion? How do we have it where though it's an over-the-counter permit? So there's lots of small cost opportunities that our community, I think, would really benefit from if we use the money wisely with one-time expenses that we do have, that this one-time money maybe will offset. So I appreciate where staff was with that. We have a motion made and seconded. We'll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Iker?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Gatos?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Mayor Bolch?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. That concludes item 12A and B. Let me find my agenda. And we are to matters initiated by council. Are there any matters initiated by my fellow council members at this time?
Yes, I would like to ask for support to put a sign, a new sign ordinance together or in total, whatever needs to be done to improve our ability to manage appropriate projects.
So I think staff provided a memo on that, it was approximately 280,000 dollars, I believe, was the initial estimate staff put together. I'm looking to the city manager, do you remember?
It was 200 and something thousand dollars.
Could we, could I ask Councilmember Testa if we add that to the potential list for that one-time money in the mid-update in February? Is a potential item?
I would rather that we try and identify it as a priority, but I would like to ask staff to revisit the cost on that. I think that I would like to understand why it would cost that much.
Do we have additional support for Councilmember Testa's?
Yeah, I support the concept, I don't support spending that kind of money right now, but if staff could look at it and report back, I'm supportive of that.
Of the memo, update the cost estimate? I was gonna have them, so apologize, I was taking Councilmember Testa's to provide a pathway where they could bring it back at the midpoint update on the budget in February? Just like the pension thing I just asserted, we could use the money for, we could use the money for that one-time expense. So I don't mind looking at it then if staff wanted to bring it back as an option. Okay, so it doesn't have sufficient votes. Okay, anything else, matters initiated?
Why don't we do what you just said?
Because there was no additional support.
Can that be the different matter initiated?
Yeah, it could be, sure. Would you like to matter initiate that?
Sure, I'll initiate.
Okay, so matter initiated is that when you bring back the budget in February, as just asserted, one potential line item could be the sign program.
I'll second that, I just, I.
Not a second, we're just looking for three votes, so, one, two, three. We have enough votes, okay?
I'd support that also.
Staff, you have that clear? We have four votes for that now. It's basically saying a line item for the one-time spending potential.
I think staff, I'd like to have him revisit the cost estimate also.
Yeah.
Because it seems a little high.
Can I just suggest something on that? I know there's support for it, but we have a code. You can read it as a council member. You wanna interlineate it, suggest changes to it, write it up differently, bring a copy for everyone and suggest we change the code to that? You can do that. It doesn't have to be staff that goes through line by line of the code and changes. We have the power to go through and suggest specific changes to codes and do the work ourselves. So at some point, you know, quote Kennedy, ask not what your staff can do for you, but ask what you can do for your staff. If you wanted to change things in the code, suggest the things in the code, and don't make staff do it.
If I could, Mayor, I mean, and to Councilmember Gatos's point, I mean, I, we're here to serve, we're here to work for the council, if the council directs the work, then we'll do it. I think the challenge with the sign ordinance is that we submitted the memo, but we also had a conversation about prioritization. And this was a, you'll recall, there were four buckets, this was a fourth bucket item. This was something that was not prioritized by the council. So when we bring this forward, you know, we'll put the money in the budget, but it's really about the staff time as well. And we, the people who are gonna do the work are gonna be the city attorney's office and the community and economic development department. And those are, you know, I think, you know, whether we have in-house or contracted attorneys, that's one piece. But it's really, my concern would be with the community and economic development staff and the time that it takes to do this work. As you all know, we don't just get to bring it to you, there's a public process that we would go through, whether it's economic vitality or planning commission or both, plus the city council. So we're here to do the work, we'll put it in the queue, but I don't know that dropping it into the budget is the full discussion.
So why don't we have the budget line item, placeholder, a pin on it, and then let's just remind us of the prioritizations at that point?
And so that's what you'll see in that part of the discussion.
And let's pause there at this point.
Go in with other things.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna respond to that. So I'm gonna respond to Councilmember Gatos's, because I did exactly that. I put together using all of the resources that I had available. And I did propose that because I don't think that it should take the type of cost that was in that memo. And I do think it's important to our community to, when we hear that we have gaps in our codes or our ordinances that allow things to happen that shouldn't be happening. Yeah, I did that. But then I heard that it is all the other things that were just articulated and that my putting together something is not going to satisfy staff. So I agree with you, I tried.
All right, so any additional matters initiated by council members? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports, we'll just go down the line. Councilmember Gatos?
I don't think I have anything to report, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
On November 6th, went to the Tri-Valley Nonprofits Alliance Power of Giving Celebration. November 9th, wonderful Veterans Day Parade downtown. November 11th, the Veterans Day observance at Pioneer Cemetery. Alameda County Mosquito Abatement Board of Directors meeting on the 12th. Passed out many awards and trophies to cricket players on the 16th. A number of us were at the ribbon cutting for the State Route 84-680 interchange yesterday, and also went to the Workday Foundation Pleasanton Connects Community kickoff.
Okay, Vice, Councilmember Testa?
I did a lot of the same stuff that Jeff did.
Councilmember Iker?
Also have is the Veterans Parade on November 9th.
Okay, the ones I have to report out, Ava Community Energy is updating the JPA, Joint Powers Authority Agreement, for voting and some cleanup, just so everyone knows. Smart Home Battery programs are underway, they're looking at that, and they're looking about how to do program updates to better serve the JPA members. And the e-bike rebate programs are still underway, still going strong, and one of the most sought-after best programs they've done. Let me just jump further down, Veterans Day Parade. ACTC met with the Programs Committee, the Safe Routes to School Program is having, where they're drawing on funding from next year for this year because of the federal shutdown. They were trying to kind of bridge the gap so as to not lose the stuff, and that's a real challenge. And the I-580, so again, 580 toll lane, express lanes, has excess revenue. The excess revenue is going to start coming out, so they're looking at projects and programs on how to use that revenue that benefit the I-580 toll lanes. In addition, the I-580 toll lane hardware is expired or past its useful life. So there'll be a capital project to put new transponder reader hardware on I-580. I-680, the one that we're all biting at the bit to get done, is expected to open in spring of '26. And then, as Councilor, Vice Mayor said, the 84 ribbon cutting was just on Monday, attended by many in our audience. The other one I have to report is LAFCO met on the 13th. LAFCO is, got their year-end budget report for '24-'25, just like we did tonight. They also got their audit for '23-'24, so I don't know what the heck happened, why it took a year, but that's interesting. I just want to make sure my fellow council members know, LAFCO is separating from Alameda County to become its own organization. And as a result of that, all of the employees have to resign from the county and get contracts and employment agreements with LAFCO Direct, I guess I'll call it. And that is creating quite a lot of work. The last thing I'll point out for Pleasanton is that they voted to move forward on the contract to study the Castlewood conditions of the capital projects for potential annexation to Pleasanton Phase 2. So they did approve Phase 2's plan. And they also got a grant for 500,000 dollars to sustain agricultural lands. Let's see, anything else? No, I don't have to report anything else. Okay. Thank you very much. Before Councilmember Gatos takes us out, I will just say happy birthday to Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Nybert, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Please take us out.
Thank you. The Pleasant City Council adjourns this meeting with a tribute to our nation's men and women serving in the military and with gratitude for every United States veteran who has bravely answered the call to service. Further, we wish to honor the memories of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in conflicts both past and present in defense of our country.
All right, we are adjourned.